Changes all the knobs on me a meeting or two ago and I don't know what.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're gonna start in one minute. It is four P M eight twenty twenty five and we're gonna start our Iowa City City Council work session. First item, the agenda is qualification of agenda item. Nothing? Okay. Second item, the information bucket discussion. We have May eighth.
I just wanted to point out the report from May eighth on the human rights year in review. The Office of Human Rights for the City of Iowa City. For anybody out there listening, that is a wonderful thing to flip through and take a look at the work that has been done over the past year. And thank you to all the people on the Human Rights Commission for the work.
Recording in progress.
Okay. That's all.
Sorry, just point of saying it was in a practice session is should I have taken it out?
Sorry, are you talking about Zoom?
Yes.
At this point?
Now it's recording. Is that acceptable? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other item for May eighth? We're gonna go to May fifteenth?
I just had a question on IP four, I believe, that had the two different housing memos.
Yes.
The second one that has the Housing Choice voucher waiting list and public housing waiting list. There's a chart in there that the number on the waiting list between April and May of this year drops by like six thousand people. I didn't know if that was a typo or if that's not a typo, if we could find out what that change was caused by.
Yeah, I mean, that is the same thing.
Yes, it's not, it's not a typo. Let me see if I can track that down. We're still going through the waiting list, but I want to make sure I represent that correctly here. Yeah, the Housing Choice voucher waiting list. So over five thousand households that were outside of our jurisdiction were removed from the waiting list. No households within our jurisdiction were removed, but several were updated to the top preference category. So we can get you more information, but the Housing Authority continues to work through those waiting lists. And we are, our top preference category is those currently living in our community. So what you're seeing is those preferences move up and those outside of our jurisdiction move off the waiting list.
You mean like more than six thousand has been removed? What's the reason for that?
They were removing people outside of the top preference category, which is people that live in Johnson County. So you can, you can, previously you could get on our waiting list even if you didn't live in our community. Now we are limiting the waiting list to that preference category. So they're removing people that are not in Johnson County or that maybe started in Johnson County. They could have signed up on the waiting list at the time as a resident and have since left and they're now being removed.
Okay, now the two thousand, and this is, you know, like this is already decision has been made to not allow somebody from who is not living in Johnson County to apply anymore. That's why we remove them or we remove because they left somewhere?
Yeah, I'd have to get you exact clarification on what they're doing, but they're essentially going, going waiting list person, individual by individual. And they have a set of questions that are either gonna keep them on the waiting list or move them off. But I can, I can get further clarification of that and add it to that report if that would be helpful.
Sure.
I think that would be helpful because it is confusing. It looks like the top preference category as it is written here does include the full Housing Authority jurisdiction area, which is Johnson, Iowa, Washington and part of Washington County.
Yes.
So if those outside of Johnson County.
I'm, so when I said Johnson County, I missed, I meant, I meant the jurisdiction of the, I meant, I apologize. The entire jurisdiction of the Housing Authority.
Okay, and then the paren- parenthetical number is those with, that are elderly, disabled or have minor children within that jurisdiction.
Right, as the top preference category.
Got it, okay.
We'll, we'll add a footnote. I'll get that from Housing Authority staff, so I don't jumble it up even more than I have right now.
No, I'd appreciate that because I think if maybe it means like people were getting on the waiting list, but they weren't vetted for jurisdiction until they came to the top.
Yeah, again, or, or they could have been vetted and then their circumstances have changed. And as we touch base with them again, realize that either they're no longer eligible, they moved out of the jurisdiction, something else occurred.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, and also like the, the one that the people who have Iowa City addresses, even though the, the waiting list is closed, but I see here instead of like one hundred and ninety-five, they increased to one thousand ninety-five, they increased to one thousand one hundred fifteen. If I can understand how come the Iowa City address has increased even though the waiting list is closed.
Sure, we'll, we'll put a, we'll put a whole number of descriptors on there. I think the one thousand and fifteen is the, is the top preference category and not specifically the Iowa City addresses. We included the Iowa City address in that February update just for a one time.
Oh, one time.
Give you an indication of how many actually lived in Iowa City. The parentheses is the top preference category, but I, I can see where this would be hard to track and apologize for that. I will work with, with our team to put some better data descriptors in there.
Thank you so much. Any other item in May fifteen, please?
Yes, IP three, I believe, pending work session topics. I would like to request that we have a work session topic on parameters and guidelines for either land banking and possible acquisition for affordable housing. The types of things that we would want to.
Pursue.
Provide, yes, pursue and provide some guidance for staff as they may see opportunities or may be looking for them. So.
I would like that.
I think that's fine, yeah. Anything else in May fifteen?
Was there a date attached to that work session?
There wasn't. I know that it's, we've got a couple that are coming up in, let me see, we're already in. So there's one in June, I don't know, later in June. I know we think we only have one in July. So it's not urgent, but I would like it within.
I think we can just add it to the other topic and we will figure it out. Sure. If none, we're gonna go to item number three, University of Iowa student government, USG update. Is anyone here?
It might be home for the summer.
All right, yeah, it is. Summer day, okay. Item number four, now we're going to update from Community and the Iowa City Police Department on crisis response effort. And this is will be by Keith Liston and Sarah Nelson from Community.
Thanks, sir.
We'll just share.
So I put in the program metrics that I'm, that I just passed out some information outside of just mobile crisis because while I know we're here to talk about mobile crisis and the law enforcement liaison programs, they're also interrelated that questions tend to come up about the other services. So I thought it might be helpful for you guys to see some of that data of what's going on on nine eight eight at Guide Link. And then I have data for the farm, if there's questions about Healing Prairie Farm as well. So if you, the biggest, I think, the most important thing to look at is how much we have increased our response within Johnson County since twenty twenty one. We had five hundred and thirty-four dispatches to the community and the entire county in twenty twenty one. And so far, year to date, and we haven't finished out the year, we have two, well, this will have three months of data missing. Had one thousand four hundred and one dispatches for pure mobile crisis. So straight mobile crisis means that they call Your Life Iowa, the crisis helpline, and, and were dispatched into the community off of Your Life Iowa. So we've made great strides in terms of awareness, people utilizing the services. One of the things I'm most proud of is how much we've increased the youth served. You can see that's gone up by two hundred and sixty-eight percent. We know youth in the community are struggling with mental health, access to mental health. Really encouraging to see that it's being used to support youth and families. And especially now that we have that extra layer of, of crisis stabilization at Healing Prairie Farm. So that if the, the crisis extends beyond what we can do to stabilize in the home, we avoid emergency department stay, which often ends up in boarding and oftentimes not an admission. So that's a huge improvement for our community and it's been really great to, to see that play out. So total dispatches have increased by thirty-five percent. Also, response time decreased by thirty-one percent. That was one of the things that Jeff and I discussed a lot when we were looking at the ARPA investment was not only increasing utilization, but decreasing response time. And that can be difficult because we don't have lights and sirens. We don't want lights and sirens because part of the appeal of mobile crisis is that it's, you know, we can go into someone's neighborhood and it's not obvious to their neighbors what's going on. And people really value that in the community and we also recognize that we're responding to a crisis. And so we train counselors, you know, the second you're dispatched, it's like get up and go because it's really important that we get there as quickly as possible. I want to point out too that we are dispatching mobile crisis off of nine eight eight, but there's not a great system in place for that yet. So right now, and that's a statewide system, so right now that looks like a warm handoff. So if somebody calls nine eight eight and our counselors decide offering mobile crisis might be really appropriate in this situation, we can offer it and then they get a warm handoff to the mobile crisis provider in their state because we serve this, or in their county because we serve the entire state with this. So that is, is happening, I think we had about seventy-five so far that have gotten a warm transfer.
What's a warm handoff?
So a warm handoff means we can't just dispatch mobile crisis while keeping them on the phone. We connect them to their local mobile crisis team for dispatch. So it's different than just a referral where I'm like, here, call this number and you can ask for mobile crisis, a warm handoff, we keep them on while we make that transfer to make sure it, it goes somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
So nine eight eight utilization continues to, to increase, which is why you can see on that graph. One of the unique things about community is that we answer the national LGBTQ line for full transparency. I'm not sure that that will exist after September thirtieth, but the number of calls we get are approximately eight thousand a month right now, and that's specific to youth. And many of them are Iowa youth and we're able to track that. And the law enforcement liaison data, I'm gonna let Chief Liston speak to, and I can answer any questions that we might have about that. But I also want to say that the, the, the majority of mobile crisis response in Johnson County is, is Iowa City residents. I Carol, our database has been freaking out for the last two days nationally. So I wasn't able to pull you guys that, that exact information, but I can email it to you because it's, it's significantly utilized by residents of Iowa City over any other municipality.
Sir, can you walk me through this, that, some of these things that are, are you gonna walk us through this? I was a little bit confused on what green versus blue lines are. And I think I've been sort of mapping stuff out as you're talking, but.
On this one right here?
Yeah, so mobile crisis outreach, what are you tracking?
So dispatches over to the left, so twenty twenty one, the, I'm not sure what Kyle did there with the blue and green, to be honest.
So don't read into that?
Yeah, don't read, I bet it's youth. That's my guess.
Okay.
I could clarify that though.
And then what's a, and then a triage contact, can you describe what that means?
Yes, so the way Guide Link is set up is it's a number of organizations that operate Guide Link. And so when somebody walks into Guide Link, they're met by community triage counselors. That's the first point of contact. And that was set up intentionally because they receive the same type of training as mobile crisis counselors. So sometimes a triage contact will come in and we are able to connect them and deescalate without them moving on to another service within Guide Link. One of the things in crisis response that's really important is the right level of intervention at the right time. We know, research tells us that if we come too heavy-handed with an intervention like inpatient hospitalization, and that's not the appropriate level of care, it causes harm. This is something that I, I, I like to share. I think it's really important information that a lot of folks don't know is the risk of completed suicide is highest upon hospital discharge than at any other point. So the reason programs like mobile crisis and crisis stabilization are so critical is that the outcomes are better. When we stabilize people in the community and we safety plan with them and we wrap around them and we follow up and we provide support, the outcomes are better than if they're hospitalized. That's absolutely true for youth and for adults. There's a lot of theories in the field of suicidology as to why that is. But most likely, it's because you go in in the way insurance is these days, right? You go in, you're in there for three or four days, that's not enough to stabilize on a medication. You're not, nothing's going to change, so you're going to have thought you were gonna get help, go inpatient, not actually have anything changed for you, and then be discharged. So now you have the extra stigma of hospitalization because people thought that's how they could keep you safe. You feel even more hopeless because help didn't really occur in that three to five day stay and now you're back at home. And so with a mobile crisis response and a stabilization in the community, you're providing the care right then, you're safety planning around what are, safety plan is a formal tool that we use to stabilize folks, identify what are their buffers, the things that make them want to stay. Do they have a plan? Do they have means? Can we help them restrict those means? And then we follow up with them repeatedly for as long as they want us to follow up with them, connect them to resources. And that's the piece that's really, really important. So when we, when we push, like hospitalization is not, in fact, most of the time is not the correct answer, that, that's why. And then for youth, we have the issue of there being significantly less beds and we have kids and their families being boarded in emergency departments, sometimes leaving without anything happening at all because they've been there for days. And so that was the impetus for why it was so important to open Healing Prairie Farm as youth crisis stabilization because it was a major gap in this community that we didn't have for youth in crisis.
Let me keep asking questions about the handout.
Go for it.
So the crisis helpline services, is that the same as nine eight eight? Are they completely synonymous or are they just different and interoperable?
The reason we call it crisis helpline services is that we have multiple crisis helplines that we operate. So we operate State of Iowa nine eight eight, which means we respond to the entire state. We offer the national LGBTQ line for youth, which is a separate line. We offer, we are the counselors that answer for the University of Iowa emotional support line. And then we have a couple of workplaces that have us answer as well.
And then you'd said that the system to do handoffs from nine eight eight to mobile crisis was not, the systems weren't worked out or weren't as you would like them? Can you talk more about that?
Sure, so one of the things that I've been advocating for on a statewide level is that nine eight eight be considered the statewide crisis line, Your Life Iowa be shelved to serve some other type of referral or coordination piece so that it's really clear and easy for residents in Iowa to know who they contact when they're having a mental health or emotional crisis. That why we have the three-digit number, right? It makes it accessible for folks, easy to remember. But the next step in that planning is transferring, being able to dispatch mobile crisis directly off of nine eight eight without doing anything. So we would have software, this is done in lots of communities across the country. We'd have software that deploys those teams, just like nine one one dispatches, law enforcement, fire, EMS. We would dispatch mobile crisis teams much in the same way. And so that's kind of the next step in the evolution of the statewide plan. It's a little complicated because until now, every mobile crisis team operates differently, looks differently depending on what, what community that you're in. And so with the behavioral health redistricting that's happening July first, the goal is to bring more continuity across the state in terms of what crisis services are available regardless of where you live, how they operate regardless of where you live. And then the next evolution in that would be dispatching mobile crisis directly from nine one one. So this again is like the best practices nationally for the right level of intervention at the right time. And so that's the next step in that evolution is being able to do that. I just was in Pittsburgh last week with a bunch of communities that have implemented that. It was really cool to see, we were in Pittsburgh, Allegheny County. They, their PSAP is robust and complicated and serves lots of counties. And to see them successfully dispatching mobile crisis off of nine one one was really encouraging. I like to point out that it's being done in Denver, it's being done in Los Angeles, it's being done in large communities. One of the things the chief of police there said that it took him going to Harvard, a lab, like two-week class at Harvard to hear from them that the thing many of you have heard me say, which is that there has never been a death or serious harm on a mobile crisis dispatch anywhere in our country, ever. And so that's the first thing that people, you know, think of and are concerned about is safety. And that's because mobile crisis teams have been, we've been dispatching for ourselves here in Iowa for ten years. We have a safety screening and a way to assess for that and there have been no major incidents. So it's just kind of that systems change that, you know, we're all used to things operating a certain way and how are we gonna address those, those concerns and mitigate them and make sure that it's successful? So that's the long-term goals and plans for how that rolls out. I will say that the diversion or mobile crisis teams dispatching directly from nine one one is something that's generally driven at a local level of government. There is no state that's rolled that out and that's the complexity, right? You, you want your local communities to drive how that would look because you don't want the, the state to drive that. So there's not a state that's rolled it out that way. It's always municipalities within states.
Would you, so people with Denver nine one one, which is what their organization is called, that have rolled stuff out like this. They said that one of the main things that you need to do in order to make something like this effective is to have mobile crisis and professionals within the call centers like the JEC. And because training is different, expertise is different, so then you have the people that are, have the capability to divert calls. And because we don't have that, that's why it says on the bottom of the sheet, nine one one diversion remains flat, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Can you get into that?
Yeah, let me speak to that a little. So I intentionally put that on here because it's really important. We launched that pilot Johnson County. I was really excited. We were one of three counties in the state to be selected to pilot transfers from nine one one to nine eight eight. And it was something that all of our law enforcement entities supported, JEC supported. And the state, I requested from the state at the time of this pilot that they invest in paying for salaries for crisis counselors to be on the dispatch floor, supporting dispatchers because it's a massive systems change. And you're looking at things a little bit differently. And so I predicted that it would not be successful if you didn't have the proper support. And there's models throughout the country that show that to be true. So I think the reason that we're seeing, and it's, it's flat, it's like two, I think, two calls that have, have been transferred since its inception. We know that there's more mental health calls that come in on nine one one, but you know, that's a lot of risk for a dispatcher to take without the proper support to feel confident in doing so, which is very understandable. So that's why I think we're seeing that model not working right now in terms of transferring nine one one to nine eight eight. I also think that, you know, nine one one dispatchers are gonna feel more comfortable doing something like dispatching a mobile crisis, crisis team because they're not just handing someone off to a phone line, they're actually going to have somebody responding with eyes on that could also call law enforcement if they got on scene and felt like, you know, we need EMS, we need law enforcement, we need, you know, whatever the situation may be. That in, in terms of our data, this isn't in my report, but that happens about two percent of the time for us right now with mobile crisis that we go out on a mobile crisis call that was dispatched off of Your Life Iowa and determine that law enforcement is needed on scene. So we, we already do that essentially and have strategies and training to ensure that we're all working together in a way that's gonna best serve that community member. The other thing that was really interesting when I was in Pittsburgh, there's an organization called Canopy Roots, which is just north of us in the Minneapolis area. And our, our first LE liaison, Joa, actually works there now. And there was a, a former elected official from that area that was talking to me about their program up there. I was asking him, you know, what, what did he like, what wasn't working well? And he said, you know, the thing I really miss or underestimated when we were building that out was how important it was to have crisis counselors embedded in the dispatch center. And I think that that is what has made it so successful. So that was nice to hear because it's, it's a program that's running and working really well. And that, that model, that's what they also do in Los Angeles. So it's, it's nice to hear that, you know, very near us, that's working well and, and that's the approach they've taken.
You'd mentioned that you had talked to the state or requested funds from the state. And I'm trying to think back to the last JEC meeting I was at, but seem to recall that that hasn't yet been fruitful?
Yeah, it has not, and I don't think it will be. I mean, I really think that if, as a community, we decide that's something we're interested in, it's gonna, it's going to have to be a local thing. It's going to take so much work for the state to invest in dispatching mobile crisis off of nine eight eight. They don't have the funding or infrastructure set up for that. They don't have the funding or infrastructure set up for that statewide. So I would think by the time the state got around to supporting that or offering dollars for that, we would be looking at a decade from now. And truly, and I think, you know, and I think that the other thing that we have to be realistic about is all of the grants that we could have applied together for Department of Justice, BGA, Bureau of Justice, Council of State Governments, all those three funding entities are who supports initiatives like the ones that I'm talking about. And all of those funding opportunities have been pulled. There were a number that we were interested in pursuing and they just are not being funded at this point. And we're seeing that with the Vera Institute and pre-trial justice. So a lot of those funding opportunities for collaborations are not going to, to exist for, for a bit.
Exactly. I, I guess when I ask you, you say you mentioned there is some local model for like, like providing crisis counselor, you know, in the dispatching. Do you, if you, if you can mention, like, give us an example and if you know how they fund it, whoever have it, how they fund that?
So the folks that I just met with, it was all local funding. I mean, it was either through a ballot initiative or it was through various ways of piecing together funding from municipalities to fund it. It was not state funding and it was not grant funded because they wanted the sustainability of it.
Like a government, local government funding, whether it is county or cities together pitching in.
So like in Allegheny County, they had the Department of Human Services funded it. They shifted money and they funded it. But what's important, because when I worked in Boulder County, it was this way too, is that what's different in Iowa is Department of Human Services doesn't get funding at a county level the way it does in some other states. So in Pennsylvania, they really push all those funds to the county to provide those services. So they had more robust funding to be able to, to pay for something like that. So the cities that, that opted in didn't have to fund it. And they have cities that opted in that are very small, like 3,000 people live there. And so obviously they're not going to have any kind of funding for that. And then there's other models that use ballot initiatives to pay for it. There's other models that have larger municipalities that, that pitch in to pay for it. It's really different in every community.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that are, first of all, thank you counselors for asking those questions because I was like, and then God asked. But I do have a couple of questions, just specific, a little bit more small. With the, the youth served, does that, that 268% increase since 2022, is that inclusive of the LGBTQ hotline or is that something separate?
No, that's.
Regardless, it's impressive.
That is just mobile crisis.
Okay.
So the LGBTQ line.
Is it separate?
That we answer off of nine eight eight will probably serve about 50,000 youth this fiscal year when we end. And then our farm, Healing Prairie Farm, has had 152 youth so far this fiscal year. And, and that's a new programs, new crisis programs, take a while to get that word of mouth. I mean, when they started mobile crisis in Lynn County, Drew Martel, who's our chief clinical officer now at Community, started that in Foundation Two. And he would like get up in the middle of the night to see if they had a dispatch because he was stressed out that they only had four in a whole month, you know? And he was going to lose funding before he ever got it off the ground. And now it's a thriving program. And that's what we know with crisis services is it takes a lot of word of mouth and outreach for people to know this is here, this is here for me, this is here for everyone, this is how we access it. And so like right now, we're at full census today as we speak. And that has only, the last two months, we might fluctuate down to only four or five kids. And within 24 hours, we're back up at eight, eight youth in youth crisis stabilization. So it's, it's definitely, people are getting the word. We've had a lot of wonderful feedback from families and kids that have said, you know, I don't think I'm ever going to have to go to the emergency department again. I don't think I'm ever going to have to go to inpatient psychiatry again. Working with our peer support specialists, they said like, I have hope for my future that I never had before because I got to work with somebody that's been there and is now on the other side of it. It's doing the things we really wanted it to do. The other thing that I'm particularly proud of is that we've only had to go hands-on one time with a youth and that was just because they were going towards the road. That is not common. When you serve youth, people, those programs use restraints. It is not uncommon for the professionals to have to go hands-on with a youth multiple times a day. We were, we were trying to build a model that was going to be based on relationship and connectivity that was going to ensure that we weren't having to go hands-on with kids because we know the trauma that that can cause. And so I'm really proud to see it actually, you know, playing out that way, that we are able with that relationship and connection to create safety for those kids and ensure that they don't experience trauma in our care. Having overseen lots of different programs with youth where we go hands-on, it's a big difference. And it's something I'm really proud of.
And I just have one other question and thank you for that. Kudos to the decrease in the response time. Can you remind me of what it was and what it is now then?
Oh, boy. I think it had gotten up to, do you remember Jeff?
Close to 30, 30 plus minutes.
And in the city of Iowa City, it's down to like 19 minutes is the average response. And then for the county, it's more around 27, 28 minutes countywide. But we've gotten it consistently under 20 minutes within the city of Iowa City.
Thank you.
Just speaking about the stabilization aspects of dispatching mobile crisis into the community. I know when so many different organizations came together to form Guide Link and get that up and going, a lot of the driving force, I think, behind getting entities to fund that related to the cost savings to the community of diverting folks out of hospital, out of jail, keeping them, you know, in a place where they could stabilize and get back into the community. I'm hearing you say the mobile crisis response also has a really high rate of stabilizing people in their homes or in, I know you respond to schools and workplaces as well. So do you have any of that data or do you, can you give us any thoughts on how we could get it to understand what we're saving as a community when we are diverting and stabilizing people at that level where they don't even come to a place like Guide Link?
Sure. I don't have that data. It's, it is probably a project, like six months to a year for us to really put that cost savings together. But what I said when we opened Guide Link, that I think is really important for, and it's the same with Healing Prairie Farm, that's really important to remember is crisis response is a continuum. And you want to use the least restrictive intervention necessary to stabilize the crisis, both for the best outcome and for efficiency and for cost. So nine eight eight is considered the, the first stop on the crisis continuum. Then you have mobile crisis, then you have Guide Link or, or youth crisis stabilization. And it goes on up from there. And so that was one of the things that I, I just cautioned people about. When we have something like youth crisis stabilization and Guide Link, don't skip the steps of making sure that this couldn't be handled by mobile crisis because it's, it's effective, it's efficient, it saves money. And they can assess, right? They can assess, does this now need to escalate to Guide Link, to Healing Prairie Farm, to the emergency department? And that's part of the assessment and liaisons do this all the time. You know, it's, that's an important part of getting that expertise out there is that we evaluate and screen for that. What's going to be the safest environment? And if it needs to be escalated, it's always escalated.
Can you speak to the, the particular chart and guidelines that are given to dispatchers when it comes to what they are to, what it currently is and the current dispatchers that we have right now? I looked at it when we had like a tour of the JEC. And I was kind of surprised to hear that, when you gave that number of, well, two calls, you know? So also hearing from, you know, places like Denver, places like Los Angeles, Oakland, Pittsburgh, Atlanta, the criteria is a little bit different and they've kind of crossed that point of things that maybe in the system we have now are considered an immediate law enforcement response, but not necessarily abiding by that criteria. And it's been very successful, like things that might have a little bit more risk, you would say, and how people have been shocked and surprised at how well that has gone and how crisis counselors are very adept at handling even those situations that are considered, considered higher risk. Sorry, that was a lot. I hope that made sense to you.
Yeah. So I mean, I think the important thing to remember is there's a big difference in diverting nine one one to nine eight eight versus nine one one to mobile crisis. So people are going to have a lower risk tolerance by transferring someone from nine one one to another phone counselor on nine eight eight. So that criteria for when it's appropriate to go to nine eight eight is going to be a much smaller window than if you were, say, dispatching mobile crisis onto the scene, who can then elevate it if it needs to. So it makes sense to me that you're seeing a much smaller number because that's, the flow chart is kind of, you know, if the person is, if they're delusional or if they're sad or if they're feeling suicidal, that feels very challenging to determine, I'm going to transfer this to another phone call counselor. But I think the important thing to remember is that on nine eight eight, we do what's called active rescues. So, and I, I think this isn't always known or understood. So we've been doing this for over a decade. We've answered the national line as well as the local lines. And if we believe we cannot safety plan with a person on phone chat or text through nine eight eight, and oftentimes it's because they have imminent, an imminent situation. I have a loaded firearm in my lap. No, I won't contact a family member. No, I won't let you contact a family member. I plan to use it. We're going to call nine one one immediately and initiate active rescue. If somebody calls and says, we've, I just took two bottles of pills, nobody's home, we're going to initiate active rescue. Now, we initiate active rescue on our over 80,000 contacts a year, less than 1% of the time. And there's quality standards for that nationally. So it's not a significant amount of time that we can't safety plan on phone chat or text to ensure someone's safe. But we do escalate it. So, but that's where I think it's different. Like when you look at Denver and you look at LA and you look at those models, they're dispatching mobile crisis counselors into the community. I think anybody is going to feel more confident about doing that off of nine one one for a wider variety of situations than they would transferring to nine eight eight. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it was, it was interesting in Pittsburgh to see the list of, you know, the flow chart and what they decided was appropriate for mobile crisis. They called it the A-team there. They played the music. A-team versus law enforcement, versus law enforcement and EMS, versus EMS, law enforcement and fire. And they had a flow chart for all of the different situations that they decided what the appropriate response would be. They also did what we do with, with law enforcement liaisons, which is have them on the radio. Sometimes departments are a little bit nervous about having civilians on the radio. But a lot of times law enforcement end up liking that because they know that mobile crisis, if they're on the radio, it's easier for them to call for help or backup if they get in a situation that does become dangerous, volatile or unsafe. And so that's what we saw there as well. And it was interesting because the police chief, who's also the president of the Chiefs Association in Pennsylvania and talks to a lot of other chiefs, those were all of his biggest concerns, which is what we've seen in Iowa, about radios, safety, all of, all of that stuff. And so getting that data on what we've seen nationally. And mobile crisis has been operating for a couple decades at this point in different areas of the country and over 10 years here in eastern Iowa.
As far as Iowa City's support of mobile crisis, I know that that was our first ARPA grant of almost a million dollars back in 2021, I think. And I don't think we've provided any funding for mobile crisis since then. Is that right?
I don't recall any extra, I don't, no.
I think I, I would remember, be excited about it. But so just as far as if there was, if, if we see this as kind of a progression of, you know, we have nine eight eight, the nine one one to nine eight eight has those limitations. If the dispatch center was able to dispatch mobile crisis, do you have a sense, is really putting you on the spot, do you have a sense of what the scope of that would need to be for, as far as the capacity of mobile crisis and eventually what that would cost?
I don't. Off the top of my head, it's something that I could easily work out. I think the important thing to think about is that the differential response is still important. So even if like we build those other layers, it's still important to have, to have the liaisons, to have the coresponder because there's different, again, it's different, right intervention, right time. So it would be something that would have to be built in addition to our current mobile crisis teams, our coresponder model, the law enforcement liaisons. Because when you flow out the different instances of who can respond to what, when and where, all of those different layers are needed. So it would never be a replacement, just so off the top. It's, and that's why I say it's typically a local investment because the state will often fund all these other layers of response that I'm talking about. And it's usually localities that decide to take it the next couple of steps for, based on what they want for their community and how they can fund it.
So just some information for the, the rest of council. I'm currently the vice chair of the JEC board, which of course has representation from the county and the municipalities within the county where we have our, everyone contributes through a levy that the board of supervises, board of supervisors approves to fund the operations of the JEC itself. Did have a conversation with Tom Jones, the director there, that the, the capacity for the JEC to be able to do this is pretty simple and straightforward, is something that, you know, could probably be absorbed in what they're doing with maybe a slight increase in the levy, which of course would require all the entities to be on board with that. And so that, that's sort of like the technical side, as I understand it, of getting the dispatch to happen. He did speak to the, like that there are certain channels that essentially if they have civilians on the radios, they, they can't access certain, like their specific radios are tailored to the type of responder that they are. And so there isn't, there doesn't need to be that specific concern with like, do they have access to absolutely everything? And that, but then just to be, again, trying to kind of map out what we're talking about here, the actual responders in our community are community employees, right? And that's also the, the case with our liaisons who are embedded in our police department.
Yeah. And the reason.
Fund those positions.
The reason for that model, which is important to me too, it's a, it's a SAMSA best practice. It's a national best practice that the partnership between mental health, community-based mental health and crisis response organizations with law enforcement brings both of our knowledge and expertise to the table to ensure that you have that moving forward. Otherwise, it could just be a civilian with no clinical oversight or support to do that job. And so I really, you know, the partnership that we have with the city of Iowa City has probably been my favorite law enforcement liaison project to work on. We have a really strong partnership and I, I feel we really do value the expertise that each of us brings to the table. And so that model's worked really well. And it's, it is a best practice nationally. And so it's good that we're following that and doing that in the community because it really puts everybody's minds together.
Counselor Burgess, when you talked with, with Tom, did he mention how many people? Like, were you talking about actual staffing of a second counselor to be in the nine one one? I just want, which thing, when you said something that could easily ramp up, what exactly?
On the technological side. So if, if, if mobile crisis counselors were being dispatched directly from nine one one, from the JEC, they would be on the radio system, right? And so the JEC maintains the towers, maintains the radios, you know, that's the, it's the infrastructure to support that dispatch system. It employs the dispatchers, but not, it wouldn't be the counselor themselves, right? So I think the counselor could be stepping in on certain calls or, you know, if they are there as support for the dispatchers themselves. We talked about how counselors in the JEC could provide peer support for dispatchers because these are very traumatic calls that, you know, these are folks who, the crisis counselors are engaging in that. counselors are engaging in that consistently, and they might be different types of calls than the sort of traditional 911 dispatcher answers. So, that's why I was trying to draw that distinction between, like, the staffing of the actual counselors versus the infrastructure. So, the JEC is the infrastructure to support that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what things would have to come together to make all of this work, right? So, which pieces? So, it sounds like the tech piece is easy, the human resource piece is probably still more not as easy. Or, not as, easy, easy's not the right word.
We, we, we know it's more expensive, right? That that is, you know, that having people employed to do the work is, for all of these systems, the, the greatest expense of, of them.
Sure. And that would be a 24, I mean, our, and goal is 24/7, somebody at JEC, like, if we were to do that, that's what we'd be shooting for, right? Just, yeah, cool. Thanks, thanks for the clarification.
Or even starting with, you know, they know, they know, like, certain times of day and days where calls might be more likely to commence, even if, you know, piloting something where you were limiting what that would be. But, yeah, ideally, all the time.
So, just to clarify, the, the levy for the JEC on the county level cannot fund, say, salaries for staff for the counselors themselves in the JEC? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I, that, I think that's, that's my understanding of how it's currently set up. You know, we, the, the, the JEC itself is based on 2080 agreement between all the entities. So, I think we could, you know, sort of, look at that and see what might be possible. But I do think the levy itself is intended for the communication infrastructure.
Okay.
As far as the state authority to levy the tax.
And, and I also heard you saying that this would require the localities within Johnson County to get on board if they were to levy this tax. I just don't know if, I don't know the process, if the Board of Supervisors has the direct authority to themselves to say, we're levying this tax, and Corleville and Iowa City just get over it? Or if they, through some formal process, do they need permission from us to levy a tax on the county level?
It would be the JEC board. So, each entity has representation on the JEC board.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is Sean and I for Iowa City.
And in Allegheny County, they did do, it wasn't everybody at the county that opted in to do it, and they, they also have a dispatch that's like the JEC, where they dispatch for every, they have 130 municipalities that they dispatch from at one dispatch center. So, it was the same model as ours in terms of, we have one dispatch center for everywhere in Johnson County, they have a lot more, but they were able to manage, because I've been curious about this myself, like, what if Iowa City was interested in doing this, but nobody else was? And that is how they've been operating. So, they had, I think, 13 agencies out of their 130 that participate in that. They're only in their second year. They launched it in 2023. So, they have 13 agencies, so they're, they were able to figure that out and make that work without everybody being ready to, to do that.
And also, I think you mentioned more than 50 is Iowa City of the crisis received.
Yes, yes.
I think we just have to highlight that, even if we try to invite people to opt in or to do this with us, we have to, like, know the fact that Iowa City is having the majority calls, so.
But then there's also, you know, like with, like with Shelter House, not to put anybody on the spot here, but we give Shelter House quite a bit of money, rightfully so, like 200K, I think. Does that sound like a decently accurate number, Jeff?
Uh.
Per year?
Probably incorporating the winter shelter and operational funds, yeah.
So, $200,000 versus Corleville's $10,000, right? That's all that Corleville gives Shelter House. And so, you know, I don't like the argument used of, well, all the calls are happening over here, or all the homeless people are here. Well, why are they here? It's because your police picked them up in Corleville and dropped them off in Iowa City at our Shelter House. So, if anybody from Corleville is listening, maybe revisit that one. But, what, what I'm getting at is, you know, it would be awesome if, you know, because, like you were saying, the main thing about stuff like this is where does the money come from? How are we going to fund this thing? It would be awesome if the county could just levy something to not only fund the technological infrastructure, but also salaries for these, the most important component, it seems, for getting this off the ground, which is the counselors embedded within the JEC. But, you know, talking, I, I feel like we should start talking with other localities about this as well in a more formal way, and I don't know generally the best way to do that. If anybody has any suggestions, let me know.
Joint entities is the right place to start.
Joint entities, yeah, but, you know, the last one was canceled because there was nothing on the agenda.
Now we have some.
Now we have something to put on the agenda. So, where do we go about putting something on the joint entity's agenda? Like, what's the best way to do that?
Typically, the week or two before the meeting, we'll ask council, the clerk's office will put a memo in one of your information packets, and you'll have an opportunity at the work session to add anything that you'd like. Really just look for a majority of you to do that, and then the clerk's office would update the host city on whatever agenda items we want on there.
Then the one, the next one is tomorrow, then the next one.
The next one?
Yes.
Isn't it in July?
July.
Tomorrow is Metropolitan.
Tomorrow's MPO.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's MPOJC.
I mean, MBC, okay, sorry. The joint entity was in the school district, and we canceled, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just mixing up things, yeah.
It's in July.
July?
Yeah. So, can we do that? Can we add that to the agenda?
I don't mind. Okay. I think maybe direct the staff to do that.
We can do that.
Yeah, thanks.
We can do that now.
Thank you.
There's one other thing I'd like to add that I think is really important, and, you know, we all have a number of social issues we're probably concerned about, how they're, how they're going to look moving forward. But if I'm just speaking on the mental health piece, I'm extremely concerned about what is going to happen to our hospitals and the access to mental health care for people in our community when we are already in a crisis. It is already incredibly hard. These are the most cost-effective services, they have good outcomes, and my biggest fear is that we're going to have kids and adults with a higher acuity level of suicidality, given the, the things that they're facing, and not have anything to support them, or not have the capacity in all of our systems to support them at the time when they need it. And so, I appreciate you guys being proactive and, and having these conversations and, and bringing them forward with seriousness, because we see it every day. It is, our mental health crisis is, is not getting better, and, you know, to plug all the other services out there, we got to have housing, we got to have food, all of those things contribute to suicide prevention. And so, it's a really important time to be thinking of all of the aspects that people in our community are going to need.
Great, yeah. Thank you. Really just listening for this from somebody who have hand on things, this is, will give us, like, really opportunity to understand how big this issue is. Thank you for coming today and providing this.
Good afternoon, Dustin Liston, Chief of Police. I visit with Sarah quite a bit, but one thing I know is every time I talk to her, I learn about 10 new things, so I need to visit with her a little more often. But, thanks for the opportunity. One of the things, I think Sarah buried the lead a little bit, but the increased capacity of mobile crisis since I have been here has been exponential, really. I think she said went from about 500 to now it looks like you'd be close to 2,000. That's enormous. And one of the things that was a concern when I got here was their response time, and they've done a really good job of addressing that, because you can imagine a police officer standing out there with someone who's in crisis and calls for mobile crisis and has to wait 30 minutes, and thinks, well, we could probably solve the problem hopefully by then. But, that, so, increasing or lowering their response time has really, I think, helped our utilization of that. But in 2021, we added a mental health liaison, we added one position, and she mentioned it was Joe, I thought he went to New York City, but-
He did, and now, now he's a minion.
Okay. Yeah, he travels quite a bit. But anyhow, he was, it was groundbreaking, I thought. He was what we now call a station-based mental health liaison. He wasn't embedded with, he didn't have a police officer partner. He would basically listen to the radio, and officers would call him, he would go out to the scene. He would jump a few calls here and there that he thought were important, even if the officers didn't ask him to be there, and it, I thought it went well. In 2021, he handled 377 calls, or, excuse me, 2022. In 2023, we added a second mental health liaison. Again, the council put out a goal in 2028 to have 24/7 coverage, so we added a second one in 2023. We, we handled 372 calls for service that year. And then, in 2024, in September, we transitioned to what we now call the coresponder model. We kept one of our mental health liaisons as a station-based mental health liaison, and then we embedded one of our mental health liaisons with a police officer. They're here right now, and I'll let them talk in a little bit. So, Kelsey started working with Katie, Officer Davis, and Officer Davis is our coresponder officer, she's a sworn officer with the Iowa City Police Department, and Kelsey is a mental health liaison with community. They're partners, like Starsky, Starsky and Hutch, only a little bit cooler. Yeah, but in, in four months' time, they handled 427 calls for service. So, they handled 100 more, almost 100 more calls for service in four months' time than the station-based had handled the year prior. And the station-based actually picked up their game as well, and they handled 587 calls for service in the year 2020, 2024. So, the benefit I see is the, the coresponder, the mental health liaison embedded with our coresponder gets them out there, and they'll tell you what they do, what their day-to-day looks like, but they're what we call jumping calls, listening to the radio, like, hmm, that sounds like that one might have a mental health aspect, and it gets them out there. And I always, maybe I didn't appreciate the value of the station-based mental health liaison, but now that we have a coresponder in the field and a station-based, Katie has a lot more time to do some of the follow-up. Because Kelsey and Christie are running around with their hair on fire, going to multiple different calls, and, and Katie's able to do, the station-based is able to do a lot more of the follow-up and make sure they have wraparound care and things like that. So, I think it's very important to maintain, for a while, I thought I would prefer all just embedded coresponders, but I've, I really now see the value of the station-based liaison because I think they have a little more time. I would like to add to our coresponders, I would like to get more coverage with that, but I, I certainly want, wouldn't want to lose our station-based liaison. So, those are the numbers. I'll direct you to our webs, to the city's website, we just published our last annual report, and that was done with help of our new crime analyst. I, I think you'll see the difference in quality, there's a lot of really neat stuff in there, and you can get a lot of these numbers that I just listed on that, too. So, without further ado, the A-Team, I guess. Yeah.
A-Team, Kelsey, Christie.
I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Officer Christie Davis. I'm our new crisis coresponder. I've been with the department for 10 years. I started out on late nights, spent most of my time there. A lot of my focus has always been victim service orientated, I've always had a passion for helping the individual who's going through a crisis, or who just needs that extra help in a dark time in their life, whether it's a few moments, or it could be a long stretch of time. So, with my time here, finally made it to this position with a crisis coresponder, what we do kind of on a day-to-day basis is, we've built up a rapport with so many individuals that they see us and they trust us that we're going to give them a little extra time, we're going to talk with them, we're going to treat them with respect and dignity, and with that, they just open up to us, to talk to us about what's going on with their life, what they're going through, people who are maybe, they're trying to get in touch with, or maybe we've been able to get in touch with, they've given us information on who their providers are. So, with that, we've been able to connect with a whole bunch of individuals from the university through Guidelink, different resources like Our Place and Community, the Shelter House, to be able to touch base with individuals where we can kind of connect hands, connect resources, and get them to, maybe the Guidelink is if that's where they need it compared to going to the emergency room. So, we kind of, on a day-to-day basis, kind of running on over here, Kelsey and I, we start our day off, we go through the calls for service, see if there's names that we recognize, that we've built rapport with, that we might need to follow up with. Kelsey has, in her calendar, number of peoples that she talks to on a daily basis, whether it's a quick text, check-in, or a phone call. There's some people that we stop by their house and just see how they're doing, see how maybe their appointment with their provider went the couple of days prior, and just doing that follow-up with them. With that, we've just, I go back to building that rapport that they feel comfortable when they see us at their door, they recognize my name. I have some people who just recognize my name from the 10 years that I've been here on the department, and instantly know that I trust Christie, I know her, I've seen her through my 10 years, and I'm willing to trust her that she's going to help me get to the right spot. Kelsey?
Hi, I'm Kelsey, mental health liaison. I've been with Community Crisis Services in Iowa City Police Department for almost a year now. This is, just to kind of piggyback off of what Christie was saying, this is something that we're both extremely passionate about, it's something that we love to get to do to serve our community and provide resources for individuals in a crisis. We understand that we're in a very privileged spot to be able to do that, not everyone gets to have this kind of opportunity to do that. And the biggest thing is being able to, I don't know if you guys can hear me, I'm sorry, knowing and building relationships in our community, understanding that, you know, how important it is to be able to lead with empathy and respect to these individuals who are calling for us, for families who are calling. Because what's kind of difference us between mobile crisis and mental health liaison work and coresponder stuff is that typically, it's not always a person calling for us to come and talk with them. It could be family, it could be a passerby saying, I saw this person talking to themselves, I'm worried, can somebody please check on them? It's, I haven't talked with my neighbor, I haven't seen them come outside, I'm noticing mail piling up, the mail carriers are worried, you know, things like that. So, being able to approach these kind of situations very delicately and seriously is incredibly important, and it's something I'm so, again, privileged to be a part of.
Katie Wade, station-based mental health liaison, I don't know how much more I can say that they haven't already, honestly. In the 11 and a half years that I've done mental behavioral health care and crisis response services, fulfilling this role is the proudest I've been. I'm going to get definitely working along these guys, the police department and community. I think I can, I think we all share that opinion. But just being there in the community that I grew up in, so getting back to where I come from and being able to fulfill this role for them, like they've said, building that relationship and bridging that gap between care, between law enforcement, EMS, fire, whoever's initially responding, and then showing up after is just, is just astounding, so, yeah.
Yes. I'm, I'd like to learn a little bit more about how you guys interact with Johnson County Ambulance and their new paramedic program, and I know there's certain groups of people who probably need help, that they might get different touchpoints with your Shelter House or the Community Paramedicine Program, and how, how does that work? Is it formalized or informal?
I think it's, right now, kind of, maybe a little bit informal. We're still trying to figure out the logistics of HIPAA and what we can share back and forth with each other. I have, I probably have the most contact with, Mike Mothershut is probably who you're referring to. We just, there's multiple calls that we go on that police are, that police respond to, EMS responds to. He's already tracking a lot of those calls, and we end up showing up on some of the same calls for service, which is how we, him and I started to kind of form a relationship together. So, it's a matter of just kind of connecting with, I'm seeing this on our side, we are having more calls for service for this particular individual, and just kind of passing on that information, and he's able then to pass on certain information to his network of people as well, too. So, just making sure that we can kind of bridge that gap where we're still, as I said, following HIPAA and what we can release with person, private information, but then helping to get that person, diverting them from, it could be a situation where that person may have went to jail because of all the specific calls for service. But now that we know a little bit more of a background, we can tag team together, work on getting that individual more to the emergency room or to substance abuse counseling, where we weren't able to connect that to previously.
Are there- Are there different privacy requirements for your two different agencies? And is there a legal mechanism for us to stitch them together?
I don't know, maybe, that might be a question for Sarah.
So Johnson County Ambulance and Community both have to follow HIPAA guidelines in a way that is different than law enforcement. So that's why we have to be kind of creative in how we communicate because there are things that are protected, mental health information protected. Substance use has an even higher threshold of protection under the law. And so all of those entities can't share as freely, just like law enforcement. If they were, had an active investigation, they're not going to be able to share with us. But in other situations, they can actually share more freely with us than we're able to share with them under the law. So when it comes to follow-up, for example, like Katie couldn't just share every single thing she learned on a follow-up call that she went on independently and protect private health information, but can share the gist of what law enforcement need to know to be aware of if they call again, you know, what might be going on. So it's, it's a fine line that we walk to make sure we're respecting people's privacy, but also able to give a heads up that there is something going on that might be best if somebody else respond. Stitching it together is a conversation I feel like I've been having for almost three decades of this work at this point. It's complicated. There's no quick and easy answers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation about it. And one of the things, I'll give an example, is that a local attorney asked me if I could just have my law enforcement liaisons get people to sign releases of information. I said, I will never do that or instruct my staff to do that because if you have someone in a mental health crisis, I am not going to encourage or have my staff encourage anyone to sign a release of information to a legal entity that could potentially have some effect that I don't know about, right? Because it's unethical if you are a mental health professional. So there's some of those things that we have to be really mindful of, and it's not, you know, we all just have our role and our job to do. And so it's not a slight, or I don't trust you with that information, right? It's just, we have to uphold what we're legally required to and ethically required to. So that stuff can be tricky. I think we do a pretty good job of managing it, always focusing on the best outcome for the individual we're all trying to help. But it can get a little tricky.
I guess when I ask Kelsey a question, when you respond to a call for services, especially if the caller is not the individual themselves, do you get like a lot of time pushback or things will go smoothly?
So it can go either way, and I think that's why it's so important. So I've been doing crisis intervention work since I graduated college in twenty eighteen. I know that's not a long amount of time, but a lot of my work has been in crisis intervention. So being able to have that skill bank, being able to build rapport fairly quickly, obviously providing space. So for someone who's like, I don't, I'm not ready to talk to you. I don't know why you called me. I don't know why you're here. It's like, hey, somebody's worried about you. What, what, what might be going on? Or, hey, are you okay? Or do you have like those basic needs, you know, things like that? Just building that rapport. We don't have to always jump to why this person might have called because you're feeling, you know, this high-risk mental health stuff going on, right? You're not so highly escalated. So again, just building that rapport. I will say, me and Christie, we have a pretty good dynamic going. A lot of the time, some people are more comfortable talking to me. Sometimes they're more comfortable talking to her. And I'm not going to, if they're more comfortable talking to her, I'm not going to force myself into that conversation or like force that, that call, if that makes sense. And so it's just like letting that person know, like, hey, we're here to support you. We're here to help you. And just trying to, you know, say pretty much like, you're in control here, right? We just want to try to help you out. So that's what's, I've had like the most success. And it's just, you know, again, always leading with empathy and respect.
Thank you.
Are there examples of what the, like, the law enforcement engagement that leads to the co-response might be? That's so, and I really appreciate the distinction between like, someone else can call, right? Because mobile crisis is voluntary. And the person who wants the support, I think, is supposed to be the person kind of initiating that contact. But other than that, what's, how does that engagement usually begin? That is law enforcement versus the pure mobile crisis?
Yeah, so we're not dispatched through mobile crisis or any sort of crisis lines, unless the crisis line is deemed, mobile crisis is not appropriate for this call-out. So a lot of time, people are calling our non-emergency line, calling nine-one-one. Again, if it is a mental health component involved, we're jumping those calls. We're dispatched as well, or en route as well, I apologize. And we've kind of built enough rapport in the community where people are starting to call us directly. Like, hey, I ran into so-and-so, I'm worried about them. Can you please do a follow-up? You know, things like that. So I will say, we're dispatched through JEC. People are calling and requesting either mental health crisis response or calling like, I'm in a mental health crisis, or, you know, something along those lines where our team, JEC, understands to dispatch us out.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
We also have officers that, if they're dispatched first, they acknowledge the fact that there is some sort of crisis on here, and they will to, or call for us to be dispatched out there as well, too.
Officer Davis, just curious, having been in the patrol, which I'm aware of. I actually got to do a ride-along with Officer Davis here, two, two years, two summers ago, something like that? And got to see a variety of the different calls that as a patrol officer you were dealing with, you know, every day. For me, it was an unusual thing. For you, it was just another day on the job. How is your job different now, working in this capacity and with a liaison versus when you were doing patrol?
When I was on patrol, it was a lot of, let's say, we still have highs and lows, but it was a lot of the highs and lows, responding immediately to all dispatched calls that I was, that I had. A little bit different with us. We're doing more follow-up with the individuals that we meet. We also do follow-ups with, you know, Guidelink, Shelter House, just kind of touch base with them regarding maybe people that we're seeing on a regular basis. I think, though, the types of calls that I went on when I was on patrol is very similar based. I would go on domestics, and I'd always be the officer that was speaking with the victim of the situation or somebody that was in the accident, the one that got their car crashed up. So I've always just been gravitating towards that victim. So I think in that aspect, I'm still doing the same thing. It just kind of changed a little bit with more follow-up and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. And part of what everybody here is doing is exploring, right? And this is experimental, and it sounds like a lot of, already some, some interesting insights, such as there's really a place for both in the field and the station, which is great. It's valuable information. Any other kinds of things? And if not now, as in the future, if these come up. But any other sorts of things that, oh, surprised to learn this works really well, or I thought this would work well, we had to do something differently? And that could be for anybody.
I can talk. One of the things, I mentioned this to you all before. We, one of the things we want to look at with our data analysts was how this impacts calls for service, specifically repeat calls for service. We had a very limited data set when we first did it. I think we had three or four months' worth of the co-responder position. And I think we may have found out why, but the calls for service with those individuals actually increased. But I think it was because they were really happy with the service they were getting, and sometimes they're calling them directly, which is not a bad thing. That's fine. If that's the result of this, I'm fine with that. I think intuitively, we thought it was going to reduce calls for service, and I still think that it will in the long run. We get people connected to the right services. They're going to not be calling nine-one-one as much. But in about three months' time, we'll have a year's worth of co-responder data, and I'm really curious to see what those numbers look like. I think it'll be eye-opening, e- either way. I, of all the programs that we've ever done, this is one I think I'm most proud of. You can see the people that we've picked have really found their niche. They, they really are passionate about it. They do a great job, and I think we're really lucky to have the quality of people in the positions that we do.
I know one of the things we still have as a council is a goal to have ultimately twenty-four seven. So, you know, what do you see as the future of this program, next steps? And this could, you know, I think this could even include some, some city manager types of input, possibly. But, but where, where do we go next?
Great question. We talked about this about a week and a half ago. I don't think we're at the point now where we need twenty-four seven. I think the council outlined a goal of maybe in twenty twenty-eight. I think the next, right now, we have fifteen hours of coverage a day, Monday through Friday. So I would like to see that increased. I would like, my preference would be another co-responder that works evening hours. Katie typically works kind of evening hours.
Evening into the night.
Evening into the night, but she's our, she's our station-based. So I would like to see maybe a co-responder those hours or a co-responder even later than Katie works. More of like, some people call it a swing shift or a baker shift, you know, that would go maybe to two or three in the morning. I wonder right now what a co-responder or a mental health liaison would be doing at four in the morning. There's a few calls, but typically our calls for service overall really, really go down. And that might be a tough, tough shift to staff, is someone sitting at the station at four in the morning with no calls going on. But that's something we could, we're ways off from twenty-four seven coverage. But I think we would plug them in, just like what we're kind of talking about if we get someone out at the JEC. If you start with one, where do you put them? You put them in the hours where you're seeing the most calls for service, and then you work out from there.
Would your data, excuse me, would your data analyst be able to look perhaps? Also, I immediately went to weekends, just because there tends to be more calls for service due to a variety of things on the weekends. So I was just thinking, is that something that actually your data analyst could perhaps take up and sort of parse out, the types of calls that happen? And if you were looking to increase, actually, I was surprised to hear that there weren't anything on the weekends. Just to, again, as, as another place to look and to investigate, given that.
Absolutely.
And it might already be on, on your radar.
Yep, yeah.
I'm curious, some, just clarification on some numbers here. It says that with total dispatches being one-seventy-three, and it says two of which led to jail slash arrest. Does that sound right?
I don't know what number, or those are.
The quarterly report, yes. I'm super sorry. Yeah, the quarterly, the quarter-three cumulative data. And then it also says that.
What page are you on?
That's just on page two, that says the jail arrest for two out of a hundred seventy-something. And then I get to probable cause slash diversion on page four, and it says probable cause present, arrested, and that's three. I was just wondering if we're looking at different circumstances here, or if that was.
So Chief would probably say the same thing that I will. This is, well, maybe not. But one of the things that's challenging is that when a call comes in, that is not often the same coding as when it resolves. And so that can make it challenging with the data collection. And it's one of the things we talked about in our recent meeting that we want to dig into more. Because that can, you know, when I first started my first program like this ten years ago, I was like, let me see your calls for service at nine-one-one. That's going to tell us, right? No, because what actually happens in the field might illuminate that it wasn't what we originally thought it was, and it really was mental health or vice versa. And so that makes the data collection a little more challenging because there's a lot of moving pieces to make sure we're really painting an accurate story. So the probable cause is the data piece that I would say I have the least confidence in, like, you know, take that with a little bit of a grain of salt because those are harder to get, get to.
And it was mostly just for clarification for me, making sure I wasn't missing something. And also, it says, in terms of types of contacts, in-person with officer was one-twenty-six, in-person without officer was sixteen. And in the probable cause slash diversion, it also says no officer involvement on scene to be forty-six. So that's where I'm a little bit confused. I was just trying to understand what the ratio was with, with these co-responders and the station versus the co-responder. How many calls are we actually seeing with a police officer present? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. So I think that's a fantastic question because I will say, most of the time, we're responding with an officer or Katie, even though she might be considered station, she's still going out of our PD and meeting out with officers on scene. So there are some times where we might be taking calls in our office because if somebody calls and they might want to talk with some, a mental health liaison about resources that, for their son. We can handle that over the phone. We don't need to, you know, meet them. We're out in the community, or maybe they're calling from a different area, but it's for their son in Iowa City. So that kind of might be the skew in data a little bit, or just kind of explain that. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah. I was just wondering if there was a, I, I think I heard someone say that sometimes the station will, you know, just hear the calls and jump before the, so I just didn't know if there were any circumstances where the station-based responder would come and just say, we don't actually need police here. Or if it's all, if, if y'all are being contacted, it is always with law enforcement, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely.
So on those calls that I'm like jumping in on, that I'm not immediately called out to, I'm always meeting an officer on scene. That's for safety purposes. That's just halftime, they're beating me there. And from there, we kind of will then just intermingle and figure out what, like, how Sarah said, like, what picture is actually being painted in that moment? And if I deem this is something I can handle, just like mobile crisis can determine what they're going to handle or nine-eight-eight, I'm going to kick everybody else out that's okay with that, if the scene is safe and secure, and I will take over from there. So half of that scene might have an officer present, but my interaction with them will not.
Okay.
Much similar to how mobile crisis just interacts on their own. I would do that independently from there.
Yeah, and I'm just asking because, you know, the officer responding to a lot of these things is in and of itself like an escalation. So I was just curious if there is any, for y'all, any actual way that you could do this just through your own reconnaissance? Or reconnaissance?
Like going to them.
Pretend I said the right word.
Independently, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
There are calls, so if it's a recurring client, like people that we've known, I mean, I've had a client I can think of in my head that I've known for years I've worked with, and it's typically substance use related with intoxication. I'm halftime meeting EMS out there on scene. So if it's someone that we know, and I know it's going to be safe and secure, and it's someone that I've had that rapport with for a good enough time that I feel very confident in my decision-making and like judgment on that call, then things like that, then I can take over. Yeah.
Thank you, that's very clarifying.
And I think if we kind of pull this together, we were talking about nine-one-one dispatching mobile crisis because nine-one-one doesn't do that now. It has to be an officer or the warm, you know, someone else is involved. And so you all are nine-one-one dispatched as opposed to, mobile crisis by itself is not currently, which is why we're talking about that progression.
And then I didn't have the data on this, but also keep in mind that Iowa City Police refer to mobile crisis more than any other law enforcement department in the county. So that means they might go out on scene, and they decide this is better, and the liaisons help facilitate this, too, decide that this is more appropriate for mobile crisis. They call mobile crisis, mobile crisis comes out, they leave. Again, that's going to have an officer interaction, just because you're always going to have that if it's going off of nine-one-one, right? Until mobile crisis can dispatch from nine-one-one, there's that responsibility, and it has to happen that way. But ICPD do call quite frequently for a mobile crisis to come, and, and then they leave.
Just one other thing on my mind is we're talking about a continuum of response. I know the county is hoping to put on the ballot in November twenty twenty-six, the jail initiative, and the questions at that, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee continue to come up of like, what's the right size, and how do we know, and what are the trends and patterns? And Johnson County, as I understand, is one of the very few places in the country that the rate of people landing in jail is not increasing even, so, you know, adjusting for population, we're doing really well with that. Is that something maybe our data analysts can help look at? Or, you know, I'm just thinking, holistically, as we're talking in the community about the possibility of a new jail slash sheriff's department slash Iowa City Police Department, you know, are we also looking at all these services that can help keep people out of jail, which I think is a goal that we all share?
Yeah, she's certainly busy with many tasks regarding the CJCC committee and working it. So absolutely, great question. She's, I know the sheriff asks her for a lot of data on what's going on, so it's, she's been very helpful in that.
And I think for us in imagining, you know, how, what Iowa City's investment in these kinds of things might be, thinking forward to that very large capital investment that we're going to be asking the community to consider, something we should, just kind of trying to pull it all together, to your point, Sean.
Is this the soft uniform? Is this the duty uniform?
Yes, I think it's kind of, it's still maybe a work in progress. We are trying to figure out what would work.
We are trying to figure out what would work best, but this is kind of what we've come up with at this point in time. It does, well, the, one of the thought processes was, was, so I would have a clear distinction, distinction between a regular patrol officer and the crisis response officer. So when anybody on the street were to look at me, they are not going to, one, instantly think, oh my God, she's patrol police officer. They'll also know that there's a little bit of a difference in my role than the regular patrol. I think I've gotten a lot of response that I just don't look like that typical police officer, that people just more, are more comfortable talking with me regarding that. There's been times where we've been on a scene where somebody just did not want to speak to anybody in law enforcement, but they were more open to talking to the two of us, because they don't, they look at us, and they aren't, they don't have that image of that patrol officer.
I knew that was something that had been discussed when this position was first being, being thought about, and the chief had shared that, like, the, just the visual approach would be one of those things to, to Counselor Wayland's. Yeah, soften it, you know, kind of avoid, you know, inadvertent escalation, so.
Yeah, I don't know, but also like, but it can be, when I look at you, but you're still like, holding all those weapons and everything, and you're still with this concern, so.
Yeah, so one of the things that we have to kind of keep in mind is safety. You know, I am keeping Kelsey safe as we walk up to the door. So those are things that unfortunately, when we get dispatched to a call, a lot of things could change from the time that the caller calls into dispatch, and then dispatch relays the information to us. And then when we get on scene, so many different things can change, information not provided. So, you know, there are some basics that just for safety aspect of everybody involved, I, as a law enforcement officer, need to have handy. But it's stuff that try to keep it to a minimum and try to keep it discreet. It's like, I don't have the outside carrier like everybody else does, so I do have that interior one. Kind of try to keep things, not as many things, on my belt, just to kind of help soften that whole idea.
Any other question for them?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, this is very informative, thank you. I think still we have time, we can talk about Burlington Street Bridge project update by the staff, yeah.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Justin Harlan, Senior Engineer here at City of Iowa City. Back in November, we selected HGR Consulting to be our consultant on this project.
Can you, yes, you speak to the mic, please?
So anyway, behind me here, I have Michael Kurek. He's a professional engineer with HGR. He's licensed both Illinois and Iowa, and he's here to give you a detailed update about what we've been up to so far. So thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, perfect. All right, as Justin said, I'm Mike Kurek with HGR Engineering, and I'm the project manager for our consulting team. And the city hired us to do the planning study here for the Burlington Bridge Building Better Connections Project. So just to touch on a few things that I'll go over today, touch on the project background and overview a little bit, then dive into our stakeholder involvement to date, how that develops some of the needs and wants of the project, and then go over our technical advisory committee, who advised on the wants and needs of those feedback items there, and then how that ultimately developed in concepts that we carried forward. So the project background here, the purpose and need really of the project, is that the eastbound bridge owned by the city was built over 100 years ago. Through some structural report and a study, it was deemed to be deficient and needed replacement. So that's why we're here today. And through all those adjacent structures, the scope of the project really wanted to capture everything that we're doing here. So now's the time to look at all of these different items. So we're looking at replacement of the eastbound and the westbound bridge with the single bridge. We're looking at all the modification options with the Burlington Street Dam. We're looking at the pedestrian crossing options over Riverside and Grand, the two-way of Melrose and Bynington, along with the other roadway geometric improvements, alignments, and how we can get multimodal through the area. And then just a quick graphic, just to show lines on a map. These are the physical project boundaries that we're going to be working within, within this planning study. And then for some context, to the Burlington Street and Riverside intersection is the second highest volume in all of Johnson County. So we have lots of pedestrian modes, transit modes, and vehicular modes all through this intersection. So lots of traffic volume, lots of considerations that we need to account for here with this planning study. So the stakeholder engagement to date, we've been collaborating and working with a lot of these different groups, shedding a lot of light onto the true project constraints. So just taking you through a couple of the different groups that we've been working with, within the project here. So we have a stakeholder working group. This is a group of individuals that is a, kind of a true representation of who would be impacted by the project. We deemed everybody on this list to have a critical function relying on the Burlington Street Dam, or the Burlington Street Bridge. So that ranges all the way from the student government, bike groups, all the way from neighborhood organizations, and historic Friends of Historic Preservation Iowa City. So kind of a broad spectrum there to give some equal representation. Then we have our one-on-one stakeholder meetings. These are stakeholders that are impacted directly by the project. So we meet with them virtually, talk to them pretty frequently by phone, email, communication, and they'll give us the true constraints, some non-starters of the project, basically everything that we need to consider with all these different elements within the project. And then we have everybody here, elected officials and governing bodies, making sure that we're checking in with you. You represent the community, create policy, guide staff, making sure that we're in alignment. So actually, anytime throughout this presentation or through the planning study, if something comes up that we need to be realigned on or get back on track, definitely speak up and let us know. It's still very early in the beginning stages of the project. And then we have the general public. So we've reached out and engaged with the public in a handful of different ways. We have flyers, postcards, project website, and email that was set up, press releases, social media blasts. And to date, we've had one public meeting so far that had about 30 attendees, and that was recorded, and it's actually on the city project website as well. You can watch the, the whole thing from there. And one of the other higher responses that we got was our electronic survey. Had almost 300 different responses, where we were able to ask the public some very pointed questions, just some samples of data that was pulled from there, but some clear outliers on some of the questions that we asked, and then left a number of things open-ended to just be a write-in of whatever's on your mind about the project. And then lastly, the existing studies, data, traffic, future plans, making sure that we're accounting for everything that could be in the project area that we need to account for. And then all the existing plans that, you know, a lot of time and effort went into them, making sure that we're carrying forward that vision and implementing that where we can within the project itself. So all of that public involvement, basically gathered, collected, and our data analysts, along with my direct team, went through all of that information, found common issues, outliers, constraints, things we weren't thinking about, and basically compiled all of that into about 35 key items. And we presented those items to our technical advisory committee, and had them rank that as a project need or a want, or a constraint. So our technical advisory committee is kind of our governing body for the project itself. They provide insight onto how these concepts get developed. And that technical advisory committee has representation from the Iowa DOT, University of Iowa, the MPO of Jensen County, and the City of Iowa City. So all of that information kind of goes in and helps, again, align and guide our technical advisory committee decisions. So for this planning study, we have three planned kind of milestones that we're calling workshops. It's a work session and very collaborative in that manner. But our first technical advisory committee meeting was really visioning, very high-level, just establishing the project wants and needs. And then our second workshop is starting to whittle all of that down into feasible concepts, and advancing just a few preliminary alternatives that we would carry forward and dive into the details a little bit more. And then lastly, that last workshop is a kind of preferred alternative singular, that we would advance this single option forward for outside funding, to go through the environmental process, and then ultimately to, that concept would be carried forward into design. So here is a summary of those key items, and how the technical advisory committee scored those either a need or a want. And just to clarify, the need was just, should not be discounted yet, just making sure that we're carrying forward all of that and not eliminating any option too early. So we took those key items, for instance, bike and ped here. We had everybody respond that there should be dedicated bicycle and pedestrian space, should be ADA compliant, lowering the bike stress through the corridor, and lowering the pedestrian stress through the corridor. So we summarized that and named it to create lower-stress ADA-compliant areas to walk and bike. So just kind of a nice summary of maybe a handful of different items that we could group together. And then up on the top showed where that paired with the council's strategic area. So it's a transportation project, lots of mobility components in there. I think it hit almost every element on that mobility component. See, I had a bullet point here. So your mobility strategic area was to design-maintain complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users, grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations, and then expand access to convenience of environmentally friendly and regionally connected public transit. So a lot of strategic actions actually just got brought into the needs category for this project. So I'll just read some of the summaries that we had there. So for roadways and intersections, we had design safer roads and intersections that function for all modes, create and enable safe, reliable, and convenient transit service and stops, prioritize emergency service access to the medical center during design and construction, and develop a sense of place that is safe and attractive, minimize construction impacts and disruption to traffic and adjacent land uses. And then the Burlington Street Dam was safety. So a lot of the needs focused on operational improvements and safety. And then to go over to the wants, so a lot of the wants was ownership maintenance agreements, a emergency response implementation that would kind of be county-wide, so if we could incorporate that, that would be great. Some additional campus considerations. And then lastly, the recreation component of the Burlington Street Dam. So if we can get a recreation element into there, then we would carry that forward. And then the project constraints here, just kind of consistent with every project, can't get away from cost, looking at environmental impacts, utility impacts, and then whether or not the bridge would be staged or closed for phasing. And then that hit on the financial aspect, where actually scope to look at some outside funding sources as part of this study as well. So then the needs started shaping how these concepts would be developed. So all the concepts carried forward would be feasible, and then really focused on these four primary areas. Those areas are really going to dictate how the shape and function of this corridor is going to be, and then the areas in between just kind of fall in place. So first, we have Bynington and Melrose, so looking at the current one-way and converting that to a two-way. Then we have the road and bike ped crossing options. We've got the Burlington Street Bridge itself, and then the Burlington Street Dam. So lots of options still on the table, since it's really at the beginning stages here. But our Burlington Street Dam alternatives range all the way from no modifications, with some minor safety improvements that don't physically impact the dam itself, all the way to full removal. With the Burlington Street Bridge, we have kind of a more traditional bridge that would have a medium-to-high aesthetic, all the way up to a signature bridge with a separate pedestrian multimodal structure. So that signature bridge is something that would range from the very high aesthetic, be kind of unique. And then the roadway bike and ped crossings, we have anywhere from at-grade, kind of as it is today, all the way up to grade separated under and grade separated over. And then for the two-way of Melrose and Bynington, there's a kind of sub-options, but look at how EMS and transit would navigate through that area. So the two-way, I guess, is consistent for every option. And then we're looking at how time impacts and efficiency for EMS and transit happen through that corridor. So looking at two-way, kind of as it does today, then looking at just the one-way westbound, one-way eastbound, and then a no-vehicle option, that would be more of a ped mall or collegiate space that doesn't have vehicles running through there, so similar to the ped mall downtown. So you can kind of see lots of options still on the table. We can't, we haven't eliminated any yet, except the ones that were just unfeasible so far. And then for next steps, is really that next milestone meeting. So actually, later this week, we'll start to narrow down some options. And then we'll have kind of another round of public involvement. So, let's see, so kind of summer, we have another round of public meetings, another electronic survey will go out that I'm sure everyone here will take. And then we'll plan to revisit with council later this summer, and then probably expect to see maybe two or three concepts that were sifted out from that larger table that would be on the consideration for that singular concept that would be advanced. And then with that, Justin, again, is the main project point of contact for the city. And then our project email is right there, if you want to test it out or send that out to your constituents, we'll respond to that.
Thank you. Any question by the council?
Yeah, I'm excited about this project, so. I guess, first, thanks for putting in ties back to our strategic plan. I think that's really nice, I appreciate that very much. So I am curious about, can you go back a couple slides in the alternates? The, I'll just start in the green box, because I was curious what exactly some of these things mean, like separate multimodal tre, bridge. Does that mean like bikes and pedestrians maybe have a different bridge somewhere else?
Completely different bridge, separate from the vehicles.
And would it be right there on Burlington, or would it be maybe somewhere different?
Adjacent to Burlington, so running parallel with the road itself.
Okay. And then just signature bridge, like, I'm curious, like.
For, for instance, that would be kind of on the range of the Park Road Bridge.
Okay.
Which ranges all the way up to like a very aesthetic cable state bridge, something very unique, that's not really seen in Iowa. So can, the range is there, I think costs will come into play, but anything is still on the table at the moment.
And I think I saw on a previous slide that somebody had desired a aesthetically matching was a word, I think I saw. And I wasn't sure whether that was tied to that concept of you want multimodal things that all look like it's part of the same project or something, or.
Yeah, just contextual for the area. So all of the streetscaping aesthetics would kind of carry through the campus area, and then all the way, you know, through the library and stuff.
Okay. And then I guess, if you go back to the alternate slide, so how, how does this all get teased out? As far as, does the technical advisory committee sort of make recommendations, like we want option three, option two, option one on all of these, after a costing exercise?
Yeah, so what we, what we'll do, so there's probably 100 different sub-options that you can kind of combine this with, but it's à la carte at the moment. We basically start at the 10,000-foot level with the need. We basically start at the 10,000-foot level with the needs and wants. And then now we're at the 1,000-foot level where we kind of need to define these key areas first. And then we'll start to get into the subcategories there. But really, what we'll end up doing is aligning those with those project needs and wants. And then kind of in a simple format in a table, kind of summarize the information that's backed with the technical information. So kind of present it nicely in a nice, I guess, non-technical, easy-to-understand way. And then if there's questions about, you know, how we've ranked anything in particular, we have that technical backing that we can pull up and discuss in that work session.
And when do you actually put lines on paper for what it could, maybe not a rendering, but like a, like where, what it could look like? When does that happen?
So we have some initial concepts that, putting the final touches on now, that'll be available for that second workshop this Thursday. And that'll kind of be the first pen-to-paper exercise that shows all the ranges of these alternatives. But the hope is that we'll start to narrow it down. And then at the next public meeting, we'll start to see some nice three-dimensional renderings, something kind of visually setting within the space.
Okay, I have one last question and I'll let my other councilors ask questions. And that would be about the dam. And what's the current, first of all, just describe what's in the dam. And my understanding, it's the university's stuff and what you are seeing their attitude is about the possibilities of that being relocated.
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's kind of a range of different options. As you can see here, there's a whole bunch of utilities that run through that dam. And there's actually, it's a potentially eligible historic structure that contributes to a potential historic district. So we'll be working with SHIPO through these options as well. So there's utility constraints, there's environmental constraints, and there's kind of a process forward to carry, carry out all of these different alternatives. But those are under consideration. Cost is a big one in evaluating these options. And then if we go all the way down to the dam removal, there's a lot of upstream and downstream impacts. The water level changes, so we are accounting for, you know, what to do when that occurs and make sure that there's no negative impacts with that option.
And since NG is the company that produces the water for the university, do you work with the university or do you work with NG on?
So we work with actually both, but our main point of contact is the university. And they're contracted through the university. So it's, they're maintaining it, but it's the university's decision.
Thanks.
So it's the university's decision ultimately what happens with the dam, is that what you're saying?
It's our technical advisory committee decision. So as a whole, the, the way we've established, the way we've established that committee, it's a unified voice forward, so not just a single entity, it's a project team.
So I've been trying to get to the bottom of like the history of the dam and the, the hydroelectric, electric power aspect of it. I, that went away a long time ago, right?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Like how long ago?
I want to say 30 years or so. We've been working with Larry Weber at IHR and that's been non-functional for a while. I don't know if you remember the exact date, but not, not for a while.
I just didn't see in the, the dam alternatives to rejuvenate the hydroelectric, electric power or anything. I just didn't know if that was thing, anything that's even possible or desired. I, I just don't know. I was just going to ask about it.
I'm sure anything is possible.
But I'm getting a lot of looks.
Is still on the table, but that's something that we could work with IHR and see if the system is still in place.
I just want to remind you guys, if you have more question, let us begin after the meeting because we don't have, we need like few minutes before our meeting.
I have no further questions at this time.
Do you guys have further, we can invite them to come back if you have any question. Okay then, thank you so much for all this information.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think we're going to get a germ and pick up item six after the meeting. Thank you. We're going to start in a few minutes. Yes, we have technical difficulty.
Are we going to pause to allow Megan to join us at that time? I think that's what the mayor's.
Sure, I think so we're going to start, yeah. Good evening, everyone. It is Iowa City City Council, former agenda and regular former meetings. It is May 2025 at 6:05. We're going to start the meeting and call the meeting on order.
We need a roll call, sir?
Yes, roll call, sorry.
Alter. Bergis.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Savick.
Yeah, here.
He's online.
Wyland.
Here.
Normally, we're looking for a verbal response from folks who are online. Mayor, can you hear us?
You are muted, mayor. He's still muted. Now he's unmute. Do you hear us, mayor?
I don't think he can hear us.
Okay.
I'll text him.
Are there rules preventing us to start without the?
We have a coram, yeah, but we just want to make sure.
Sure, we can do either. We could move forward with the proclamations, those aren't votes, of course. Or we can wait for the mayor to make sure we get him on whatever the presiding officer's preference is. That's Mayor Portem.
Okay, sure. I think we can.
Hello, can you all hear me wave your hands?
We can now, thank you.
I cannot hear you.
Yes, we are doing roll call.
Did he just, I'm sorry, mayor, did you just say you cannot hear us?
No, I can.
Oh, great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Second item is proclamations, and this is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed. Whereas every day, one hundred twenty-five people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than two hundred sixty are shot and wounded, with an average of more than nineteen thousand gun homicide every year. And whereas Iowa has an average of three hundred forty-three gun deaths every year, with a rate of ten point seven deaths per one hundred thousand people, a crisis that costs the state four point two million, billion each year, of which fifty-three millions is paid by taxpayer. Iowa has the forty-second highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas support for Second Amendment rights of low-ableton resident goes hand in hand with keeping gun away from those who are dangers to themselves or others. And whereas elected official and law enforcement officer in partnership with local violence intervention activities and resources knows their communities best and the most familiar with local crime, criminal activity, and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their community members safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas in January twenty thirteen, Hadia Ben-Delton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June sixth twenty twenty-five, to recognize the twenty-eighth birthday of Hadia, born June second nineteen ninety-seven, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to hide the and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearm out of the hand of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, I'm Zaher Saleh, the Mayor Protem, in behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, due here by Brooklyn Men, the first Friday in June, which is June sixth twenty twenty-five, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Iowa City and encourage all residents to support their local communities offered to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence and honor a value human right, a human lives. Thank you. Here to present, to accept, is Karen Green.
Thank you so much. I'm proud to accept this proclamation from you. And just to reiterate that Friday, June sixth, is officially Gun Violence Awareness Day, and it's celebrated through the weekend. And that day and the weekend are dedicated to raising awareness about gun violence. And this weekend also honors the countless lives taken by gun violence. Firearms are the leading cause of death for American children and teens. We can do better to prevent senseless acts of gun violence by promoting common sense gun safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess Lang with Johnson County CVI. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your continued support and partnership. And also wanted to thank you also for the resources that the Iowa City Police Department is continually providing, the CVI program. We've had a very busy couple of years, and we're getting ready to head into our third year with quite a bit of success and organization, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three is consent agenda. May I have permission to approve consent agenda, item three to seven, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second.
Harmson.
Moved by Mo, second by Harmson. Public discussion. Is anyone in the public would like to discuss anything on the consent agenda? If not, council discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yes.
Okay, motion basis six to zero. Now, we're going to go to item number eight is community comment. Only in person comment will be allowed for community comment. Public comment for a specific agenda item, which must be directly related to the agenda item, may be made in person or remotely. Any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Martha Norbeck. Some of you may know me as the Green Architect, who comes talks to you a lot. I'm, would like to talk to you this evening about twenty-one South Lynn. I was surprised, as maybe many of you were, to go from three to one proposal in a pretty short order. I am very excited about the Graham Rel proposal. I think it has a lot of really good components to it. Committing to full building electrification, affordable housing, the mixed use, solar panels proposed for the roof. I mean, there's a lot of good things about this proposal. I'm concerned, however, this process kind of, after very methodically going through public connection, now we've done multiple work sessions, and now we're here. And in the last work section, it was sort of like, hey, tell us, you know, what, what, what do you want to make sure is in this contract? And we're just gonna proceed with the contract. And it just felt like, huh, we got this little hiccup, like we didn't get a public engagement to the actual proposals. And I think there's a lot, as I said, there's a lot of really good things to talk about. And I, I'm thrilled they're not asking for TIF, but at the same time, they are asking for a million and a half dollar discount on the property, which is not insignificant. And, and I think there is some room for accountability of talking about the city values. Despite all the assertions of the things that are going to be done from a sustainability standpoint, there is no language in the proposal that says we are gonna hold ourselves accountable to our goals in these ways. There is nothing that says we're gonna do an energy model to demonstrate we've exceeded the Energy Code by twenty-five percent. There is no target of we're gonna reduce our embodied carbon by ten to fifteen percent. There is no commitment to we're actually gonna calculate our water use reduction. So these are things that are important to the sustainability that were baked into that conversation we had last summer about the TIF proposal. And I understand they're not asking for TIF, so your leverage is different, but it's still a million and a half dollars. And so I would love to see a lead commitment. And I realize that as a lead consultant, it sounds like I have a vested interest in this, but I can tell you that OPM definitely won't hire me to do the lead consulting on this project. They, they are perfectly capable of doing this themselves. And the reason the lead, lead is important is because it's a third party checking these things. And I, I am able to use that leverage as a lead consultant to communicate with the client. You can change this way and this way, and tug and tug and pull and pull. And these were the goals you said when things were glorious three months ago. And now it's hard, but how do we still get the goal you set three months ago? So I urge you to evaluate that and hopefully open up for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Sharon DeGraw. I have a small request that I think can add up to be meaningful, which is in a discussion on last Friday about affordable housing, one person asked if the money that, when there's, there's money in an account for affordable and low-income housing that the city has set aside, when that money accrues interest, where does that interest money go? I believe it should go back into the account and be applied for low-income and affordable housing projects, rather than be allocated for something else that the city might like to do. And so I guess my request is, would there be five council members that would approve or initiate the process to talk about that and get that going? That's it, thank you.
Anyone else?
I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. This is for what's not on the agenda, right?
What's not on the agenda, yeah.
Okay. Well, my thing, oh, my name is Mary Gravitt. And I'm here for my neighbors. In order to punish the tenant, our landlord is taking away our laundry. And he sent us two emails. The first email stated that the tenants, which Keystone had evicted the prior week, had come back and robbed the laundry over their washer and dryer. And they told us, as the tenants in the next building, to look out for him. The second email stated that our former neighbor had come back, robbed and vandalized our washers and dryers. And, and as a result of this, he was gonna remove our appliances, our washer and dryer, and close the laundry down. And we'll be without laundry service. And the robberies would not, would not occur if he hadn't used electronic tokens or a swipe card. And we complained about this. And the, the emails also stated how these robberies had been occurring. He said, the email said, I don't know, I know who wrote it, but I'm saying the email said, from Keystone, that a tenant had been propping open the door with stones. And in the case of my building, using the loose door mats for this purpose. And thousands of dollars were spent on locks. In case of my building, which is a twin to the neighboring building, first, the insulation of locks, they put two, we have three entrances, they put two locks on three entrances. So that when I asked them and told them this was not enough, they told me they didn't have enough money for the third lock, and the tenants had to wait. And in the meantime, despite the warnings posted by Keystone, the land, some of the tenants and their guests still coming to the, our building using the mats to prop the doors open. And, and I have, all the tenants, older tenants, so we have complained about this. And Keystone won't pay us any attention. So, and then there's people that come and run through the building, loud people, people smoking marijuana. We complain, nothing is done. And even the tenants are afraid to call the police. They said the police won't pay them any attention. But as a result of all Keystone's inaction, we're gonna lose our laundry. And we need our laundry, because we live on the east side. There's no public laundry there, except in other apartment buildings. And so I think something should be done. We shouldn't be punished. We're paying our rent, and we're doing everything that tenants should do. And this is why I complained to Keystone. And like I said, the tenants are afraid to call the police, people running through the building. And it took me a long time to get the locks on the doors. But with the mats still there, they just prop the door open, walk in, walk out. They don't pay rent. Why should we have to subsidize people who are criminals coming in and, you know, just coming in, causing trouble for us?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're gonna go to item, do we close the public comment?
No, you're ready to go to nine A. I was just lowering my microphone, because it's my understanding that Counselor Alter has joined the meeting electronically. I'm just looking for verbal confirmation from her for that.
Counsel Alter, are you there?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Thank you. It took me a moment to unmute.
No, no problem. Okay, I think we're going to go to item number ten A.
Nine A.
Nine A, I'm sorry. I was skipping. Okay. Raising of North Governor Street. An ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately five point four, nine acres of property located between North Dodge and North Governor Street for a medium-density single-family residential zone, high-density single-family residential zone, medium-density multifamily residential zone, and multifamily residential zone to high-density single-family residential zone with a planning development overlay for approximately point seventeen acres, and to medium-density multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay for approximately five point thirty-two acres. And this is our second consideration. May I have a motion to give second consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Bergus.
Second by Bergus. Public discussion. Anyone in the public would like to address this?
Good evening, councilors. I'm Audrey Barick from Iowa City. I want to acknowledge that the City Council has been working hard on a difficult rezoning application, yet there are problematic aspects of the process so far. Council is moving forward toward approval without having acknowledged, let alone discussed, several major issues brought by the neighborhood, detailed in both correspondence and in public presentations. Lest you believe the neighborhood consists of myself and only a few neighbors, as stated by planning and zoning, it should be noted the neighborhood has overwhelmingly signed protest petitions and entrusted myself and Sharon DeGraw to be representing them. They are attending to their jobs and lives, but if angry villagers wielding pitchforks is what is needed here, and that's a metaphor, not a threat, we can make that happen. City Council has stated the applicant should reasonably expect the road to approval to be smooth and nearly automatic when P and Z have approved. They state it would be inappropriate not to approve if an applicant has checked all the boxes. But P and Z misrepresented and minimized our concerns in the consultation with council and in stating the approval process, and in stating the approval process should be nearly automatic. Council has overlooked that there may be protest petitions coming in in the meantime, leaving no room for the protest petitions to matter. These petitions should influence your decision-making heavily. Do you see what has happened? If P and Z has, has not listened accurately to the community, but council should approve smoothly if they approve, who is responsible for answering to the community? The process is circular. The city received twenty-six petitions specifically protesting the loss of transitional zoning by the inclusion of nine hundred North Dodge Street. Whether these separate petitions have legal standing or not, the neighborhood has chosen to underscore their high level of concern by speaking out in this way, and the neighborhood deserves to be heard. Citizens should be able to trust in the comprehensive plan and the zoning code such that when they buy a single-family home insulated on both sides by single-family zoning, a large apartment complex cannot be built immediately next door at the whim of a developer. Though so far has been no acknowledgement of the loss of transitional zoning due to the inclusion of nine hundred North Dodge and the OPD, in fact, the opposite is true in my correspondence with the city attorney and with senior planner. Both have denied the reality of the loss of transitional zoning. What is it that we're not understanding about upzoning to RM twenty and the building rights now and in the future that come with that designation? And Sharon DeGraw will continue.
All right. The, the letter is from Audrey. I'm continuing it, and I've put my name in the basket. Given the city as co-applicant, transparency in your process should be a higher priority. It should be exemplary. Yet, the staff report obfuscates the purpose of including... Yet, the staff report obfuscates the purpose of including 900 North Dodge, which is solely to create unused density, which can be transferred to 84 units on the 911 property a block away. The report only hints that this is so in stating that as a condition of the upzoning to the RM20, it will be converted to a single unit to comply with density requirements. Rezoning 900 North Dodge Street sets a bad precedent, undermines public trust, and should be removed from the OPD. With the city as co-applicant, planning and zoning would have been under pressure to approve and did so. Planning and zoning appeared to have approved the rezoning without having digested the major concerns raised by the community. In the May 6 city council consultation, planning and zoning inaccurately reported a chief concern of the neighborhood as being traffic, and then dismissed that this with development brings increased traffic. The actual neighborhood concern here is safety for both drivers and pedestrians and the lack of infrastructure to support safety. Bringing such a large development to this land, island situated between north and south one-way streets with aggressive double-lane traffic, no crosswalks, and no safe pedestrian route out is to entrench and exacerbate already unsafe conditions for 100-plus new residents. A concern of the neighborhood clearly articulated in correspondence and oral presentations is lack of pedestrian safety and lack of infrastructure to support the increased density. Access to public transportation or to Hy-Vee from the development requires jaywalking across the two lanes of aggressive Highway 1 traffic at a point of low visibility for drivers. Access to man school requires the same or cutting through the woods without a designated path. It is inappropriate to press forward with development without addressing these inadequacies that likely rise to the level of illegalities. I believe ADA requires new development to provide access to the public transportation and zoning code specifications, specifics, oops, development occur where there is infrastructure to support it. I can see that I have 10 seconds. I urge the council not to move forward with approval. You could improve the process with accuracy systematically reflecting hearing, community concerns with collaboration with an urban planner, and address the complexities of safety, infrastructure, and density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address? Yeah, go ahead.
Before we listen to anybody, I'm so sorry, we're getting weird feedback from the iPad here and it's really hard to like, I'm trying to mute it myself, but it keeps unmuting itself. I'm not sure, I can hear everything twice from the, okay. I'm not the only one, I'm not crazy.
I'm hearing it too.
Yeah, no, no. It is, I try to, normally we go just here and make it like not, but it gives us this option. I don't know why. We should just like do this and... I try to do that too. Okay. That's good. Maybe, yeah. I think we just need to talk so we can hear if it's working or not.
It sounds like maybe that's better?
That's better, yeah. And I just want to make sure the mayor is hearing us and also council.
Again, hear you. It does show that the host is, mic is on, the Iowa City host.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to turn off, but then it would just turn itself back on.
When it's muted, we can't hear you. When the host mic is muted, we can't hear you.
Thank you.
But now, is that a problem?
Can you hear us now, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can.
Yep.
We can look at that.
And Megan, you can hear us, Megan? I think so.
Yes, I can.
All right, great.
Thanks for...
All right, I think, yeah, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mark Rolkey, and my family brought the property on 1018 North Governor Street way back in 1974 when I was six years old. So I've lived on the north side of Iowa City for well over half a century now for most of my life. Governor Street used to be pretty calm back in the 70s and 80s, but the traffic has only immensely increased. I think it'd be an epic failure for traffic and for public safety to put 80 or plus more units there in that property. What I don't quite understand is, we went through this process, I want to say about eight or nine years ago, and we denied the zoning for, I think it was, two 24-unit spaces there. Now the property owner's come back seven, eight years later and has doubled the size of the space he wants to put in. If it wasn't safe then, why would we approve it now? I don't know how familiar you guys are with North Governor Street. On the east side, there is a sidewalk. On the west side, there is no sidewalk. They would have to then, for safety, add sidewalks all the way up the west side, all the way to the top of the hill there, which would be very, very impractical. I just don't see how at all it'd be pedestrian safe to add that many more people to that neighborhood. I mean, I realize the community is growing, but I don't understand the justification for those larger buildings there when we already have on North Dubuque Street new buildings going in, across from the Dairy Queen, new spaces going in. I don't understand the drive for that much need. And we already once decided not to rezone that property about 10 years ago. So I don't understand why we'd go back on that rezoning and try to actually increase the size of it. You know, take away the community sense that has been in that neighborhood for 50 years, and many of these neighbors, I know, couldn't make it down tonight, I actually don't even know these individuals here, but it just, it just seems like a huge step backwards. I mean, I think we all would have gladly accepted a couple, eight complex units there, which was initially proposed 10 years ago, which should have been a third the size. I just, you know, I think it'd cringe on the park. I mean, directly below me, the next two properties are Habitat for Humanity homes that have about eight to 10 children that live there. Increasing that, the traffic on that bend that comes up and down is just dangerous. I mean, there's accidents there every two or three weeks, it seems like, when people are coming screaming down that hill, because they do scream down that hill. And it's, it just makes no sense. I would, I would hope we have more common sense amongst our elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address this matter? Okay, yes, come forward to the podium, please.
Hello, I'm Sandy Berto, and I live and own 911 North Dodge and 913 North Dodge. Part of the reason we bought our home in the north side neighborhood was for the uniqueness, the character of the older homes. I wish we could have had a house on Brown Street because I love those big beloved homes with the big trees. But at 911 North Dodge, we're doing all we can to make the neighborhood more beautiful and welcoming to the people who a lot of times scream down North Dodge. I'm really concerned about the safety of the pedestrians that go down Dodge, and then if they're crossing across the park area to get to North Dodge, then they still have to cross that. What's it going to take, somebody to be seriously hurt or worse? I'd also like to say, we wholeheartedly agree with the letter that was just presented by Audrey and Sharon. They have been our voice when we couldn't have attended. And I think if you look at the 26 petitions that have been offered, that there are more than just Audrey and Sharon who have come to be our voice. I really like to have you consider, again, the zoning on this, on this property because it's going to affect the North Dodge and North neighborhood, neighborhood for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yeah? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Anna Bladel, and I will sign in. I confess that I feel fairly inadequately prepared to speak to y'all, but I am living in the house on Brown and Lucas that my great-grandfather, a Czech immigrant here, built. He was one of the bricklayers, who was part of bricking Brown Street. And I am only able to afford to live in that neighborhood, in all honesty, because of the family house there. I am a strong proponent of building affordable housing. I am a strong proponent of various kinds of mixed neighborhoods. I moved back from Brooklyn, New York, to Iowa City because of a desire for a sense of local community. And I am not interested in living in a neighborhood that continues to be unaffordable for a lot of people in this community. And I'm really concerned about the safety in the particular process of this zoning. My sister was almost hit three different times while pregnant crossing Brown Street right there at North Dodge. I walk for all of my transportation, walk or bike by choice, and it's part of why I love living in that neighborhood and working downtown, that I'm able to commute by foot. And I, too, have at least five times, like narrowly avoided being hit there. I have chosen to walk some of the kids across the street there to help them get safely there. I'm really concerned about some of the processes that haven't been followed here for the rezoning. And my concern is not with increased affordable housing, but my concern is with making sure that there are sidewalks for kids, for those of us who live in the neighborhood, and especially in terms of folks needing access to the sidewalks for disability. It's becoming increasingly hard to do so because of some of the traffic issues there that I think haven't been addressed and could be addressed in order to make, make a good proposal for affordable housing there. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure you're going to sign in. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else would like to address this matter? And also the developer, if you would like, a representative of the developer, if you'd like to say something, you can. It seemed like none here online, so yes, council discussion.
I can start?
Yes.
I think that the reason to speak directly why we're back here is because the denied application from 2018 that I personally very much liked went to the Supreme Court of the state of Iowa, and they said, no, 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 Iowa City, you can't do that. You can't deny somebody's development rights based on a long history. So that's why we're back here. And because of that Supreme Court case, there are buildings, lots that are zoned R3B zoning, and those are a 1970s areas, era zoning that I really think we need to make them sunset and go away as quickly as possible because we don't have any controls, I shouldn't say no controls, but very limited control on what we can permit or not permit on those sites. And I think that the things that could be developed there would be very, very bad and completely contradictory to our comprehensive plan. As I understand it, we wouldn't have to follow any of the rules of our comprehensive plan because of the Supreme Court case. So that's why there's an effort to sort of combine these really weird R3B zones with the existing plan. And then we have to somehow mash that up with a comprehensive plan that isn't perfectly compatible with that. And the, the sort of central district plan, page 60, does identify low-to-medium-density multifamily housing in that area. There is an additional lot that was not identified as that, so that is, that is a change. But that is listed as being eight to 24 units per acre. So that's how they got there. I, I'm not going to comment on the, the look of the building or anything. I know in the ensuing week from the last time we talked about this, I've talked to a lot of people, including people who came to the listing post. There, there's a lot of people who don't necessarily love this proposal, but, and they were kind of curious about the comments that I was making about sidewalks. I was kind of obsessive about sidewalks last week. And that's because our comprehensive plan does talk about sidewalks over and over and over again. It shows up 36 times in our comprehensive plan. The site that's before us has a sidewalk on it. And the memo that's in the city council packet that was written by the assistant city attorney, or city manager indicates it's really our city responsibility to direct staff to say, put in the connecting sidewalks and study the crossing across the street, which I would like to ask my fellow councilors to say, let's direct our staff to do that. But that's, that's where we're at, where we're at. And I do want to get rid of the R3B zoning. I do think that the density is, when you merge it with this R3B zoning and our comprehensive plan, it, it, it makes enough sense. So I will vote yes, but I also would like council support to do some city investigation into how we can improve pedestrian access and safety at that new site. Additionally, a point to the memo that was provided by staff that indicates that the way that you enter and exit, the traffic safety component is something that can be done that's non-substantive during the OPD development process. I would ask that they work on that to improve that. But at this point, the, it seems as though those, those traffic safety issues as far as people turning the wrong way down a one-way can be resolved in the next phase of the process with the professional city staff. And the sidewalk is a thing that we can just, we as council can just say, we are doing this, we're going to put in a sidewalk if the rest of the council agrees with that. I think that's a logical extension from our discussions and the memo to, you know, should this move forward, that, that also, and I think we kind of do that with our sidewalk infill anyway. I think that's, that's not unusual, so I agree with that. That that would be, you know, should this move forward, that should be the next thing we look at, but obviously we have to wait for the actual plans and stuff like that's, you know, these pieces can move together, but that's not going to be, you know, a next meeting kind of a thing, excuse me, kind of a thing.
I was going to raise a lot of the same points that you did, Josh, just relating to this specific site and what has happened in the last decade. Well, really since 2018, when the Iowa Supreme Court said, we have to allow that R3B zoning if that's what the owner wants. And so just some differences between what's proposed and that, the buildings could have been 10 feet taller in the R3B zone. That zoning requires a lot more parking and therefore just more concrete on the site. We wouldn't have standards relating to the, kind of the massing of the buildings and the building materials. We couldn't impose those. So there are certainly trade-offs that we're making, and I, I think we're all trying to acknowledge that. And I just want to say to the residents, we are truly hearing you appreciate the concerns about connectivity, about safety, about density, and taking all of that into account. For myself personally, I'm still going to continue to support this, this rezoning. So I want you to know, it's not discounting your comments, it's not saying that, you know, a particular thing that was brought forward by a planning and zoning commissioner, you know, carries the day or is dispositive. It really is a complicated balancing act, and we know that, that you don't agree with that particular decision, but I just want to make sure you know that it does matter that you're here, it does matter that you're, you're speaking to us, and it does matter that there were numerous signatures on that protest petition. And that's reflected not only in our consideration of the comments here, the correspondence that's been provided, the meetings and phone calls that I know all of us have had with a variety of people, but also in the procedural aspects of requiring the supermajority. So I know it's unsatisfactory and very frustrating, but I just want to make sure to say affirmatively that, that I am listening and I know we aren't agreeing on this particular issue, but please continue to engage your local government.
Also, we still have the mayor online and Megan, if you would like, just jump in, please.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, I'll just jump in and I'll, I'll just say the comments that have already went before us, before us, yes, I do support, and say yay to all of that. And I'll just highlight really that the individuals that are coming to the meetings and all the ones that we've met with either personally or through communication, through email, I really appreciate all those voices there, and I don't want you to feel that it's being discounted. I think, you know, it's been said that this is a little convoluted and complicated, and I, and I'll, I will be supporting this, but I just did not want you to feel like your voices have not been heard.
Council Alter?
Thank you. I echo what my fellow councilors have said, and in particular, I do want to thank the North Northside neighbors who have worked incredibly hard to make your voices heard. And I do echo what Counsel Burgess said in particular, that we are disagreeing in this particular, but it is by no means because of simply discounting your voices. Additionally, I want to heartily support what Counsel Mo said in terms of saying, as counsel, when we are through with rezoning, then we can work on connectivity and safer sidewalk, getting a sidewalk, and look into more robust public safety measures. I am 100% for that. I am supporting this. Someone did say that, you know, this decision will impact the Northside for years to come, and I do say this without irony and all sincerity. I hope that it does. I hope that many more families and people will be able to call the Northside neighborhood their home as well in years to come. And I just want to say that that's something that I am, it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood, and I think that more people deserve to be able to enjoy it and to enjoy it safely. So I am voting yes for this, and I am heartily supporting that we look into measures to get connectivity for pedestrians and safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's well said, and I don't want to like stretch things out by repeating all the things that have been said, but things were good comments. I mentioned earlier the sidewalks, but thank you, Counsel Alter, for bringing up the public safety, because I think that isn't, that is something we talked about a little bit last time, if there are issues with the excessive speed. And again, you know, you can find that on many stretches in Iowa City, because let's just face it, not every driver is cut from the same cloth. But, you know, certainly whatever those public safety measures look like, if it means some increased traffic enforcement and a few more tickets to remind people they need to slow down there, so be it. If, I know we do have that flashing sign that's coming down the hill there, reminding people of what their speed is. I don't want to second guess what the solution is, but I think paying close attention to that as we do these different modifications and look at the pedestrian traffic are going to be really important, so, because this is, you know, we do want this to be a pedestrian and bike-friendly community.
So, you know, I will say that this, as I expressed in the last time I, or last city council meeting during the first consideration, that this has been extremely frustrating for me, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the counselors, and I'm pretty sure for the staff, but I feel like for me, it's just been kind of like banging your head against a wall, trying to figure out how to, I wholeheartedly agree that I think that the city should be able to, or the community should be able to tell anybody that what we need is affordable housing in a certain area. I think that, well, let's just boil it down to very basics, I don't think housing should be a commodity. I think housing should not be something that's viewed anyways, just to bring it back to reality, to more current matters now. But it is, we do not know what will be built here, even if the zoning goes through. The worst-case scenario for a lot of people, if the zoning goes through, is that exactly what is in the OPD will be put there, and that is 84 units of just market rate housing, whatever the developer wants to put there. I still find that preferable to not building any more housing, and that comes from somebody who is very skeptical and thinks that a lot of times when talking about affordable housing, people put too much emphasis on supply and not enough emphasis on affordable aspects and other ways that we can keep rents reasonable. But it is part of the puzzle, even if I think it's overstated sometimes. And so the worst-case scenario is exactly what goes here. And the best-case scenario could be, again, we don't know who is going to end up developing this space. We don't know who is going to buy it. We don't know what their mission will be or anything like that. So my advice to people within the neighborhood would be to try to come up with solutions yourselves and have some agency about, reach out to folks, you know. Land is for sale and something can be built there, and you don't necessarily have to wait for a government body to say what goes there or for a developer to go there, you know, you can come together and get creative with it. And I will say, my main concerns, safety-wise, I'm fully supportive of, fully supportive of directing staff to prioritize, like it says in the memo, prioritize a project for the design of the sidewalk on the east side of Happy Hollow. That provides people access to the park. It connects people to the rest of the sidewalk infrastructure that can lead downtown. I also really want to see something go there, because when you view, I really hear the concerns about the craziness of the traffic in that area. It's real, even if you might not see it on paper. I have a friend who lives over there, and I visit them, and I'm always scared backing out because people can be flying down that hill. So my major concern, though, is with like pedestrian crossing, because people will probably want to be walking to Hy-Vee and stuff like that to go to the grocery store. And that's one of the main reasons why I think housing is so, this is such a prime location for housing, because it is infill, it is in direct walking distance from like five grocery stores and elementary school. And all the data shows us that families that grow up in these types of neighborhoods have, especially the children, have better life outcomes. So as a Northsider myself, I, you know, I want to share in the greatness that is the Northside, you know, and I love it, and I don't want to see it be like a gated community. And I'm not saying that that is what is being, I'm not saying that is what is being said. And because I know that there are concerns that are not NIMBYism, but it is, yeah, I think that's all I have to say. So for the second consideration, yes. I will be supporting it for the second consideration, yes.
Okay, my two are nice things. Okay. I really love to see this site to be developed, and because it's been sitting there for a long time, so we need to see something happening there. I also understand the need of more housing, because that could drive the, you know, the market of the affordable housing down, maybe. When we have more housing, maybe the rent will be less. Some people believe that, and maybe, I don't understand that. But I also understand that the problem with the court and the Supreme Court and everything, I get that. But I really believe every neighborhood have, should decide about what they want to see in their neighborhood, not the government, not the elected official. If I see a lot of people came with the petitions and they have concern, that's really concerning me, because I've been elected by those people, and I should listen to you. That's why anything come from the people and the people reject it, I believe I should reject it too. Because I want to see every neighborhood in Iowa City decide about what they want to see in their neighborhood. They are supposed to be the people who make decision about what should go in their neighborhood. That's why I, while I'm going to vote no for this, I encourage the council to still connect with the staff and try to give the staff direction, at least to do some of the doable request by the residents of this neighborhood. I'm going to be voting no. Anyone else, or I think roll call?
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six to one. May I have motion to accept correspondence, please?
So move, Burgess?
Move by Burgess?
Second, Mo.
Second by Mo. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Abou, same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we are now in the regular formal agenda. Ten A, FY20 security rate, public hearing, and order amending Title III, entitled finance, taxation and fee, Chapter Four, entitled schedule of fee, rate, charge, bond, fines, and penalties. And this motion to pass and adopt.
So move, Burgess?
Move by Burgess? Second by Mo. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter? I believe Counsel Alter indicated she would be logging out after the last item. Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Now, ten B, State CDBG-CV funding, resolution approving an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for State CDBG-CV funds. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second, Harmson.
Second by Harmson. And we have the staff, okay, from the NDC.
Hey, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. This is a public meeting for the city's application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for State CDBG-CV funds in partnership with Shelter House for Shelter Operations. CDBG funds were originated through the 2020 CARES Act. Funds must be used to prevent, prepare for, and/or respond to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since we're in 2025, we're really in the response portion of that requirement. The city has received funds for allocations of funds in the past since 2020, either directly from HUD or through the Iowa Economic Development Authority, over $2 million in total. We've used those for emergency housing assistance, so for rent for people who are impacted by the pandemic, aid to nonprofits who are serving people impacted by the pandemic, a business assistance program, and emergency shelter improvements most recently. So I'm going to go through some of the requirements for the application to the state. So the description of the project, the CDBG-CV funding will be used for emergency shelter operations. This would be things like staff costs, utilities, maintenance, insurance. They cannot use the funds for rehab or construction activities. Funding was made available to Iowa shelters selected by the Iowa Economic Development Authority, so locally it's a shelter house, emergency shelter. We are anticipating an award of $301,500, with $300,000 going to Shelter House for their operations, and then $1,500 of administrative or activity delivery funds to the city. We also anticipate trying to shift some of our existing admin funds from prior projects to this one, just to cover the full staff cost of this project. We expect all funds to serve low to moderate income activities. This is CDBG rules, so everything has to be under 80% of the area median income. However, we expect that all those served by this project will be extremely low income, under 30% of the area median income. Shelter House is projecting 400 individuals will be assisted by this project. All their clients are referred through the local coordinated entry process. Location of the project activities is 429 South Gate Avenue in Iowa City. It's a 70-bed emergency shelter, and no relocation or displacement will take place as a result of this project. So we're discussing the need for the project and also tying it to COVID to related to the funds. We know that housing is a leading and social determinant of health. This was highlighted, especially during the pandemic. Emergency shelter provides a safe temporary living environment where clients can get their daily needs met as they pursue stable housing. We also know that economic hardship and housing insecurity has increased since the pandemic. Housing costs have increased, and Shelter House also reports a deficit of $723,407 for their emergency shelter operating budget for this year. That's an updated dollar amount from the agency from your packet. So the CDBG-CV funds will allow the agency to continue provision of services in our So again, this is a public meeting. It's an opportunity for members of the public to provide input on the activity and the community need, if they desire some of the questions on our application. What are the needs of low to moderate income persons in Iowa City related to this project? Access to safer, affordable housing and access to services, including shelter and other basic needs? And then what are the planned or potential activities to address these specific needs? Our planned shelter operations project will address the need for shelter and related housing services for individuals in our community experiencing homelessness. It's a low-barrier shelter, prioritizing those with the highest needs, and then funding will continue the operations. So other community development and housing needs in Iowa City, this is another question on the application. I've listed here our top priorities in our city steps 2030 consolidated plan that was approved by council in January, expansion and preservation of affordable housing, provision of public services, and public facility improvements. And so I listed down below some planned activities or ongoing activities that address these needs. This isn't a comprehensive list, but just a few to answer the question. So our federally funded activities, we have an ARPA housing stability pilot project. We have CDBG funding rounds, home art activities. We're working with Iowa Legal Aid for Eviction Prevention. We're doing supportive services, and we've funded DVIP new construction at their shelter. We also have our housing choice voucher and public housing ongoing programs. And then we've recently started a home tenant-based rent assistance program, locally funded. We have our aid agencies program, city's providing funding for street outreach and the winter shelter. We have our security deposit assistance program, and then also landlord risk mitigation program. Next steps for our application, so we did a public notice for the application in the Press Citizen on May 13th in compliance with the application rules. Our full application is due to the state on June 1st, and then funds would be available once we're awarded and must be expended by May 2026. So this is a pretty short-term project, so all the funds will be expended within a year. And then if there's any questions or communication regarding the project, my contact information is listed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to our staff, for the council? Okay, now we're going to open the public discussion. Anyone like to address this matter? See the Shelter House here, do you want to say something? Yeah, come over.
Thank you. Chrissy King-Gonelli, Executive Director of Shelter House, and I hope that you will unanimously vote to approve this request. This funding will be very impactful and extremely helpful at this time, as city staff have shared. We have a deficit of over $700,000 in our emergency shelter operations. That is exclusively shelter operations and the direct costs of operating emergency shelter. Last year, we did implement a new staffing structure to ensure that our spaces are better supported, our staff are better supported, our clients are better supported. We have shift supervisors on second and third shift now with two people per shift in emergency shelter. We did not have these staff ratios in the past, especially with the onsite shift supervisors. These were adjustments that were necessary and should have happened probably going back to 2018, when we implemented a low-barrier approach to emergency shelter. So these increased costs will be ongoing for us. We do think that they are essential to being able to provide safe shelter for the very complex needs of our clientele. I think that there was an additional laid handout that was shared that indicates the highly complex nature of the population, high incidence of chronic homelessness in Johnson County. We're second out of the most populous counties in the state of Iowa for the occurrence of chronic homelessness. So we have a very vulnerable population that we're working with. So thank you very much for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion. I guess things, the need is really great, and losing 700K, oh my God, that's a lot money to have, and I think the need is really great, and we need to keep what we have operating if we can.
Yes, thank you. Thank you also for doing all the work to get this grant all lined up.
It owed to it all.
I'm happy to sign a piece of paper and to give homeless services $300,000, so. I would also like to take this time to, for the second time this evening, call out the city of Coralville for only giving, only giving Shelter House 10K, and Iowa City gives an extremely larger amount, same thing with North Liberty. I would like to take this opportunity to say, the reason that you don't see as many homeless people in the city of Coralville or North Liberty is because they come to Iowa City. It's because y'all's police, I don't know where the camera is, y'all's police drops them off at Shelter y'all's police drops them off at Shelter House. It does not mean it's not your problem. So this is a problem for the entire county, and people should pitch in equally proportionately. 10K is not proportionate, right? We see an increasing homelessness in our communities all across the country, but in Johnson County too. So I would just like to please say there's levies that you can use, that you haven't used. So anyways, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, roll call please.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. All right. Item number 10C Tobacco Civil Banality and Permit Suspension. Cases General Restore Number 2761. Okay, resolution assisting 15,1,500 civil banality and 30 days retail cigarette permit suspension against cases general restore number 2761. Now we can go with the staff comment please.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can begin before Sergeant Matt Tice, and I'll invite you to come to the podium if you would for a moment. You can talk a little bit about compliance checks and how they work and the individual circumstances of each of these cases. I say each of these cases because as councils are aware, there are a number of these items following this one on your agenda. So council's role tonight is to decide whether or not a violation has taken place. I believe Sergeant Tice will be explaining that, that the employees in each of these instances have pled guilty to the criminal charge, and we have considered that sufficient in the past. And then to impose the penalty, the penalty I would note is set by state code, so it is not something that council can alter one way or another. And the language from the state code says shall assess. And so if you feel that a violation has taken place, but you would really like to not impose the penalty for whatever reason, unfortunately, under the state code, that is not something that's available to you. With that, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Tice.
Good evening. My name is Matt Tice. I'm a sergeant with the Iowa City Police Department, and I oversee the tobacco compliance checks. A little background, the city has a 28E agreement with the Iowa Department of Revenue to perform the tobacco compliance checks. These checks are done once a year on businesses that have the tobacco permits. If a business fails, there is a recheck done on those businesses. How the actual compliance check works is that we use a helper who is under the age of 21. They work with the police department to conduct these checks. The underage person, they're only allowed to take their real ID and whatever money we give them. There is no deceit involved in this. So if they are asked how old they are, they will tell them, you know, exactly how old they are. If they're asked for their ID, they will give them their ID. If they are asked if they are old enough to purchase this, they are to answer truthfully that they are not. There is absolutely no deceit in this at all. When these checks are being done, the helper is sent into a business, and they will attempt to purchase any tobacco, nicotine, or vapor products. And this is audio and video recorded and monitored by police. If a business sells to this minor, the minor will purchase it, come out to the police. We will speak with them, and then the police will go in and talk with the employee and issue a citation for an employee providing tobacco products, vapor cigarettes to a person under the age of 21. And then in this instance, these businesses that are on here that had failed, all the employees have already pled guilty to those citations.
Any question?
If I remember correctly from our kratom discussions, the state actually sponsors the costs of doing these. Is that how that works financially? Like there's some...
You're asking if they're reimbursed for doing the checks essentially?
Yeah, are you aware, is this reimbursed through the state?
Yeah, it's part of that agreement.
Part of the 2080 agreement. So the overtime cost, if an officer incurs overtime and then the payment to the helper.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact amount, but it's per check that you get reimbursed for.
Per check, okay. So per compliance check is...
And so we just do as many of these as we have the funding to do them? Is that kind of the way it works? Or is it required to go to every single place once a year or something?
For tobacco, it is every single place that has a permit to sell those.
Once a year?
So, yep, once a year. But part of that is if they do fail, then we have to do a recheck on those businesses.
Any other question?
Did you say that it is whoever is the one to sell, like the employee, those are the ones that are charged criminally?
Yeah, so they will receive the citation, the employee that actually sells it to a minor.
Okay, the employee and after what? Is it a couple times, then it will turn into something that is the store itself has to pay? I'm sorry, I'm...
Oh, no, well, there's two different things. There's the criminal penalty to which Sergeant Tice has talked about, the criminal charge for the actual employee who provided or sold the tobacco product to the minor. That's the criminal side of it. What you have before you tonight on all of these is the civil penalties that are imposed on the permittee, that is the business. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that's clarifying. I was also wondering what type of criminal penalty it is.
So it's a citation.
For the employee, like...
Yeah, I'm sorry, are you asking for what the fine is?
No, what the like level of criminal penalty is it? Is it like a...
It's a simple misdemeanor, if that's what you're asking.
Simple misdemeanor, okay.
Yes.
And you say that we don't have the authority to say no, is that correct? That we don't have the authority to say we don't want them to pay the civil penalty, right?
If you conclude that a violation has taken place, then you are compelled to impose the penalty called for by state code.
But what we have before us, like you said, is the civil penalty on the business and nothing on the individual?
That, yes, that's correct. Everything you're talking about tonight is imposed on the business, not on the employee.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I really want to talk about the employee. Normally, the store will give them clear directions that they don't have to sell to minor. That's normally happened, or because I don't know if the employees know and they did it, or because since they're going to have like simple misdemeanor in their record.
One would assume that all of, that that would be a very important part of the training for any employee who is selling tobacco products, much like alcohol products, that they need to be trained, that you need to identify and make sure that they're at least 21 years of age to purchase.
Sure. Any other question? And I don't see the permittee here, so I think we skipped that. And I would like to have a motion to approve.
So moved Mo.
Okay, move by Mo.
Is this just for the first one, or can we do all of them at once?
Well, we have to give the, this is just the first one, sorry. We have to get the permittee a chance, man, I appreciate that I see no one here, but...
Got it.
These subsequent ones will be quicker.
10C only.
10C, thank you.
Do we zoom to second?
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
I'm waiting for second.
A second.
Okay, Harmsen. Second by Harmsen. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, 10D Tobacco Civil Banality Essential Vip and Smoke Shop. Resolution assisting $300 civil banality against essential vape and smoke shop. May I have a, no, now we have, do we have to do the stuff again?
Right, I obviously won't give the procedural aspects again, but I will ask Sergeant Tice to come forth to at least confirm that the employee in question has pled, or either been found guilty or pled guilty to the criminal charge.
So similar, the employee for here has also pled guilty to this.
Sure. Okay, any question? And the permittee is not here. Now we consider the resolution, may I have a motion?
So move Burgis.
Move by Burgis.
Second Mo.
Second by Mo. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10A Tobacco Civil Banality Hacai Smoke and Liquor. Resolution assisting 300 civil banality against hacai smoke and liquor. Also, now for the staff.
This employee has also pled guilty.
Okay, and also the permittee is not here. May I have a motion to consider the resolution, please?
So move Burgis.
Second Mo.
Burgis, second by Mo. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Burgis.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Item, motion passes six to zero. Item 10F Tobacco Civil Banality The Crown Liquor. Resolution assisting 300 civil banality against the Crown liquor. Also the staff, if you want to...
The staff has pled guilty.
All right. And the permittee is not here. Consider resolution by, can I have a motion?
So moved Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen. Discussions, council. Okay, roll call please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10G Tobacco Civil Banality The Smoke Outlet Tobacco and Vip Shop. Resolution assisting 300 civil banality against the Smoke Outlet Tobacco and Vip Shop. May I have, okay, first of all.
Yes, the employee has pled guilty.
Sure, and the permittee also is not here. Consider resolution, can I have a motion to approve?
So move Burgis.
Second Y-line.
Yes, second by Y-line. Discussion. Okay, roll call please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you to the staff. Yes, thank you, say again. Okay, now item number 11, council appointment. And we have the airport commission. Airport commission one vacancy to fill a four-year's term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029. And we have also, do we accept the correspondence right now or later?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your question.
No, I get it, thank you. Council discussion. Yeah, thank you.
Our applicant has a letter of recommendation?
I think we should appoint Chris Lawrence.
Yes.
I would think that.
He said something in like an email that technically you're not allowed, or it's not usually permissible to have more than two terms, but is that something that we can waive or?
I have the rule before me. It's from the council rules, Rule 36. It says, except in unusual circumstances, an individual should be limited to one reappointment to a full term in order to increase the opportunities for new applicants to serve. So except in unusual circumstances, so that's up to council's discretion.
There's one applicant.
There's one.
That's unusual.
Yeah, no one else is applying.
Actually, it's unusual for us.
I think we should move, we're always here.
Yep.
Okay, may I have a motion? Top point.
I'll, I think we did this, but I'm...
You did? I think I just said I recommend we do.
Okay, sure, I'll move. I'll move it, Chris Lawrence. Be reappointed. Reappointed, yes, to the airport commission.
Move by Mo.
Second.
Second by Y-line. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Above same sign.
Move to a subcore exponents.
Motion passes six to zero. And now can I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Burgis and second by Y-line. And all in favor say aye.
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 Above same sign. Motion passes six to zero. Community Police Review Board. Community Police Review Board two vacancies to fill four-years' term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029. Council discussion.
Was this Melissa's first or second term that she's finishing up?
She been before, I think.
Melissa Jensen.
Melissa Jensen.
Yeah, I think it's her.
She has been before, I don't know if she had a gap in between.
Yeah, she have a gap in between. She served with me, she's awesome and amazing. So she served with me a long time ago when I was in the...
Channeling Bruce.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with Melissa.
If you say she's awesome and amazing, then let's go.
I'm stealing that from you, Maya.
I love it.
So like...
Sorry, I was going to say I liked Audrey.
Yep, that's what I was going to say, Audrey Mueller. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess so.
Let me check that. Attorney? Yeah, but Claims Counsel. I know that in the past, we've had some question about defense attorneys, but this is not a criminal practice, so that would not be a concern.
If I understand her position correctly, she works for a title insurance company, so I cannot, real estate title, sorry.
Right.
So I can't imagine any conflicts here.
Excellent, yeah. It's fine with me. Do we have a formal recommendation for those two? Or do we need?
I move to appoint Melissa Jensen and Audrey Mueller to the Community Police Review Board.
Second.
Second by Burgis, second by Harmsen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Above same sign. Motion passes six to zero.
Can I, just real quickly, just want to toss out there, possibly throwing the future of what the CPRB looks like in our city ordinance onto a future work session. I don't have a specific date in mind, but I think with, and I don't know if the governor's yet signed. She has?
Yeah, signed last night.
Oh, really?
Yes, if you're talking about Senate File 311, yes.
Unfortunately, yes.
She signed it last night, which bans boards, local boards and commissions that basically review police behavior, if you will.
Is the effective date July 1?
It is not, it's August 16th, which is a rather unusual date. I'm not sure how they came up with that, but it's August 16th.
Yes, so I mean, if we could get that onto a work session at some point, giving us plenty, you know, over the summer would be.
And I think from my nine years serving on the Telecommunications Commission, that commission had its authority to do most of what it was intended to do stripped in 2018, and then the commission eventually recommended that it be disbanded after carrying out a few other activities. So I don't know if we can ask the commissioners to consider sort of what the continuance of the commission should look like as far as they're concerned. That would be something I'd be interested in hearing.
You're reading my mind. I had thought about a joint like, you know, see if any of them want to come in for that work session.
Or maybe we can invite them to come in one of the work sessions, yeah. Okay, item 11C Hostile Preservation Commission at Large. Hostile Preservation Commission at Large one vacancy to fill a three-years' term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Council discussion.
I'll just mention that Seth used to work with me, and he no longer lives in Iowa City, so probably shouldn't be considered.
Thank you for that.
Fair enough.
Is only one?
Don't have a strong preference here. I didn't communicate with either of the remaining two applicants. I think that both of them have benefits. Construction is always helpful. So that would be Austin, but I don't have, I didn't do more than just read the application.
So it looks like Jack is also, I liked Jack's application, and I, it seems like he is applying for multiple, including the.
HCDC.
The HCDC, yeah, so it might make sense to appoint Austin, so we can consider Jack for housing.
I'm good with Austin.
Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved Austin.
Second.
Move by more, second by Y-line, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any above same sign. Motion basis six to zero. Item number 11D, historic preservation commission, Brown Street. It is one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Council discussion.
I think we need to look for another applicant.
Does staff need direction from us on that?
Uh, wouldn't.
No, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Leave it open. The, the single applicant doesn't live here, so I think we move on, yeah.
We move on? Okay. 11E, housing and commission development, commission, do we do anything when we move on, or just move on like that?
I'm sorry, I'm struggling to keep up, and 11D, you don't wanna appoint anyone, is that correct?
11D, 11D has one applicant who I don't think lives here anymore, so.
Okay, so you'd just like to repost, is that the will of council?
I think.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that.
Do you want to have to do a motion for that, or just repost?
No, that's enough, informally, it's fine, thank you.
And now we are in 11E, housing and community development commission, and I will leave that to our city attorney to speak about this.
Oh, right, thank you, Mayor Protam. So this one's a little complicated, so council may recall that there was a member removed at the last council meeting. There is an appeals process that lasts 30 days, so we don't want to appoint anyone tonight here in the, I guess, based on the possibility of that individual coming forth and appealing successfully, then we would have one too many members. So we're asking for a deferral to the June 17th meeting, that would be far enough out to be outside that 30-day appeal period. Also, it would then be after the June 3rd meeting, at which the HCDC has put forth, or will be putting forth to council, a motion to change their bylaws that will reduce the number of their members from nine to seven.
Okay, then I would like to have a motion to defer the two vacance to fill unexpected term upon appointment June 30th, 2026.
Move.
To June 17th, is, I'm sorry.
To June 17.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, June 17, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved Mo.
Move by more.
Second Harmson.
Second by Harmson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Above same sign, motion basis six to zero. Item number 11F, housing and community development commission. Housing and community development commission, two vacance to fill three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. And.
Same thing, right?
Same condition.
Yeah, the last motion, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam referred to both 11E and this item, 11F, so I think this one's already taken care of then.
Okay, we don't have to do it, both of them, okay.
Thank you.
Then, thank you. Item 11G, library board and trustee, library board and trustee, three vacance to fill six years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2031st. And yes, council discussion.
I'll say that I've seen firsthand that Kelmia Strong is somebody who already kind of like runs a library type thing in, for, for Public Space One, and, you know, not even just my shorter time on the Board of Public Space One, but just throughout the years of, of knowing her and what she does for the community and like the values that she holds specifically in a time when like libraries are unfortunately under a microscope and under attack, so I think someone like her, someone I know, has that type of dedication, that's why I really liked the application from Kelmia. Yeah.
One supporting Kelmia?
I think they had, I agree, they had a strong application, two other applications that jumped out at me that, one of them, Kelsey Patrick Farie. And then the other one, Katie Prisky.
Yeah, I like Kelmia Strong and Kelsey Patrick Farie, those are on my list.
Okay.
We are seeking three.
Oh, there are three, right. Corey Schwiegel skiers.
Look at that one again. I'm getting a mix in my head.
Yeah, that's three?
I just wanna make sure that I'm thinking, not mixing up applicants here. Okay, yes, I did have Corey up here as favorable. And as well as Kelsey, okay, wow.
We need three, right?
So it would be.
Katie, Corey.
Kelmia.
Kelsey.
Kelsey and Corey.
Kelsey, not Katie.
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to appoint Kelsey, Corey, and Kelmia, yeah? The three.
So moved.
Move by Y-line, uh-huh, second.
Second.
Second by Burgess, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Above same sign. Okay, motion basis six to zero, may I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved Burgess.
Move by Burgess.
I would also just like to thank all the applicants, because I had a good time reading all the applications.
Yeah, they're good applications.
Yeah.
They are.
Is that a second?
And it was a tough choice in a lot of them, so yeah.
Okay, I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second by Harmson. I said, is that a second, huh? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Above same sign, motion basis six to zero. Item 11H, planning and zoning commission. Two vacance to fill five years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2030. Council discussion.
I'd like to put James Davies or David Davies, as he listed here, forward, he's applied in the past, communicated about planning and zoning issues, very familiar with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, David, or Davies, and also Caleb, who is currently on the HCDC, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Is he one of the ones coming off?
I don't think he is, I think he rolled off last summer, his application is, this one's about a year old.
I believe that's correct, I believe he's no longer on HDC.
Yeah.
Okay, so someone with that experience, I think, would be valuable.
No problem with that.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll move James, or David Davies and Caleb Bynning.
Okay, move by more. May I have a second?
Second, Burgess.
Second by Burgess, all in favor say aye.
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 Above same sign, motion basis six to zero. And also vacance new. 12A, police review board, one vacance to fill an unexpired term upon appointed June 30th, 2027. And do we accept correspondence, or no? No, okay, human rights commission, one vacance to fill an unexpired term upon appointed December 31st, 2025. And applicant must receive, application must receive by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Motion to accept correspondence, please.
So moved.
Move by Y-line.
Second Mo.
Second by more, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion basis six to zero. And also vacance previous. 13A, public art advisory committee, one vacance to fill an expired term upon appointed December 31st, 2025. And application must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 10, 2025. Airport zoning board adjustment, one vacance to fill a five years term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028. Airport zoning commission, one vacance to fill a six-year term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2029. Board of Avil, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment December 31st, 2028. Historic preservation commission, commission, Jefferson Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2022, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Historic preservation commission, Jefferson Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Historic preservation commission, Summit Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Historic preservation commission, Woodlong Avenue, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027. Vacants will be remain open until filled. City council informations. And now we, yes, council member, if you would like to report in any, like, briefs meeting, attending, or commission.
Counselor Harmson and I went to the landfill and did a listening post there, it was a wonderful day, thanks to the Public Works for throwing a fun event, so I actually don't know what next year would be, for where the next event would be.
The next Public Works Open House. We haven't decided on next year's location yet.
I look forward to it every year, so I gotta admit, water treatment is my favorite, but, but no, I will, my intention is to type up the notes that we had and issue them in a memo to council for the next IP. Some of them included some rather complicated technical questions, so I'm trying to get answers with the professional staff, so we have answers, not just a list of questions. Also to, actually, this is a, do we wanna merge this with our work session item of commissions and boards? We didn't get to that. Seats met today. So, and just, they continue to seek efficiencies, and they are actually seeing some increases due to some new software of being able to have less time per rider and still provide good service, so there's some good news there. Since you already kind of led off of that, thank you to all the people that came out and looked at the new building out at the landfill, it looks nice. Speaking of efficiencies, one of the reasons why that is there is because the former building was literally had gaping holes, was too small for some of the equipment, which meant equipment was left out in the weather year-round, couldn't be worked on in some cases, had to be shipped to other places in order to have a garage big enough to work on it with some of the bigger tractors and, and things like that, which now will be able to be done in, on-site, which will, which will have some long-term benefits, as well as some, some much-needed upgrades to the spaces for the employees, so that all looked really good. Other board and commission, UNESCO City of Literature is doing, also looking at efficiencies, realizing the difficult place of many of our organizations here because of the change of administration, is doing a lot to make up the difference and keep that organization vital, and, and kudos to John Kenyon and other members of the board who put a lot of time and effort into making sure that that's gonna happen.
Anyone else do you wanna report about our rules committee?
Oh, Rules Committee.
Oh, yeah, we had a nice short meeting with the Rules Committee, we touched on it a little bit for the appointments, to the commissions, the, the rule change lowering the number of people on the HCDC. And it was approved, and the logic was sound.
Sure, counsel Burgess.
I don't, I think the only thing I would mention is, we do have an MPOJC meeting tomorrow, but I am intending to miss that to attend the Iowa City Downtown District's annual event, which is at our senior center from 4 to 6, I believe.
Yes.
And when I looked yesterday, there were still tickets available.
Can we have five staff members go instead of us, or, I don't know.
Alternates are available, I will already be attending as one alternate, I assume we can rally up some troops. We can see, we can see what we can do, yes.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I didn't think about this being an option, you let the genie out of the bottle, so.
I just never miss the MPO, so I figured I can miss one, but.
Yeah.
Oh, should we write you an email?
Sorry, saying what?
Should we write an email to the city manager saying if alternates are available, or?
Oh, yeah, that sounds good. If you, if you would like an alternate, just raise your hand here, how about we do this?
I already arrange one.
Okay, we need five alternates.
Is it acceptable to have all of us at the city downtown?
Maya, are you going, do you need an alternate, Maya? No, Maya's not going, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of trust, that's all I'm saying.
But also, the mayor, if you wanna report in any event or commission, just like young bear.
Yeah, again, it's graduation season, so congrats to all the graduates from the University of Iowa, as well as to Kirkwood Community College, have attended some of those graduations, but I, and I was also at the Public Works Open House, so I, of course, saw our counselors there, man on the table with definitely a lot of community input, so that's always great to see, it was a great event, and agree with all of the comments about the need, as well as the great work of our Public Works Department. Other than that, I'll leave it at that. And sorry, as many of you know, I wasn't able to be there in person, but Mayor Protam, you're doing an awesome and amazing job.
Thank you, thank you. We understand. Okay, now, if no one else, I will move to item number 15, staff report, city manager office.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor Protam.
City attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, city clerk?
Nothing.
All right, we have last, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Burgess.
Second.
Second by Y-line, and all in favor say aye.
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 Above same sign, motion basis six to zero.
Mayor Protam, I know that the council members have all basically addressed number six from the assigned boards and commissions and committee, but since we said during the work session we would be filing up, maybe you can just open and then immediately adjourn the work session.
Open, oh, yeah, that's true.